That works, sure.
Thank you. Mayor, if I could, sorry if I introduce the proposed session. Thank you. Mayor and council members, there is on tonight's agenda a proposed executive session for consultation with the city attorney and special counsel regarding pending eminent domain litigation in Jefferson County District Court. Case number 2020 CV 30231 to discuss acquisition of property rights and to instruct negotiators pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113 C 23 and 7 as well as Colorado revised statute 246402 for A, B, and E1.
We're live right now, right, man? So, welcome to everybody that might be listening. We're getting ready to go into executive session. We don't anticipate it's going to take a long time, so just stay tuned and get your popcorn or whatever you're going to watch the Bronco game with tonight, and we'll be back as soon as we get out of executive session. So. Just to be sure, this is Mayor McNally, and we are getting ready for a study session, but first we have a pre-meeting executive session. We don't anticipate it to take long, and Attorney Frankel, you have cause for executive session?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the proposed executive session is to consult with the city attorney and special counsel regarding pending eminent domain litigation in Jefferson County District Court case 2020 CV 30231 to discuss acquisition of property rights and to instruct negotiators pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113 C 23 and 7 as well as Colorado revised statute 246402 for A, B, and E1.
I'll go around the table and ask if you agree to go into executive session.
An old second that.
Been segmented to go into executive session. I will go around the table and ask, well, first of all, is everybody okay with it? Thumbs up?
Yes.
All thumbs are up here, and now I need you to state that you will, you're willing to go in and that you're willing to keep it confidential.
Seymour, yes.
Lindsay Emmons, yes.
Bruce Baker, yes.
Dave Demont, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Jody Andrews, yes.
Barbara O'Keefe, yes.
Sarah Borgers, yes.
Don Hollis Strander, yes.
Sorry, and Dave Frankel, yes. For, well, perhaps when their study session reconvenes, then their attendance could be noted for the record, but for the purpose of the executive session.
What did I say else? Welcome.
If I'd known I could avoid my Bronco stuff, I would have.
I don't ask for permission, I just do.
He's kind of the big cheese, so.
Just in case.
Welcome to tonight's study session. We did just get out of an executive session. We have council reports first. I have one that was from last week, and I do not remember the name of the resolution, but it was one for the pre-concept before things come to planning commission and then come to us and, and we feel like we're in a corner. I had shared some time ago that Broomfield does this pre-planning. It's a 20,000-foot overview, but you get to see what's being proposed, get to add some comments at the front end instead of the back end after months and years, and lots of money has been spent, and then they have to go do revisions. So I did not question last week because I hadn't been able to get ahold of the mayor of Broomfield. I was with her Thursday, so asked a lot of questions, and I know that what we wrote up for our process is not even close to what they do. And so then I talked to a couple of developers who do some work in Broomfield and ask what the process was, how they see it going, and, and is it beneficial, isn't it? And they do. So I'm going to ask if, when it comes onto the agenda next week, if we could take it off the agenda and either table it or have the city manager take it off, and I don't know how to do it, what we have to do, but table it and then have it massaged again and then come back. But it, it is not what, it is not at what it was meant to be, and it won't have the same result.
If I could, Mayor, I don't think the second reading has to be on the 24th. If council would like for staff to reschedule the second reading for a later date to give time to compare the Broomfield approach, I think that our team was looking at Broomfield's approach, but absolutely could modify to correct for any kind of omissions that are of concern and propose language for consideration on second reading. If council is interested, we could draft proposed language for, for that purpose, to, to modify the approach to better capture what Broomfield has accomplished.
And I did take good notes, so I promised Jody, I shared it with him, that I'll email that to him so that he has that to go with. So my question is, is anybody else willing to do that, Mr.?
I would like us to do that because I wanted to have that flexible input process, and I thought we were matching it more closely than it turns out.
Yeah, and, and what was written, we just give written comment. We don't have it actually here at a study session to have our intermingling conversation that doesn't get real in-depth, but like when we did Uplands and we said five stories, ew, we only want three, we're doing that on this end before it gets to that end.
For me, that is like the most glaring example of somewhere where that doesn't seem like multiple times. It hasn't been everybody on the same field. Luckily, when that developer came back, he was very clear that he heard that we said three stories. But I've heard both inside the community and staff a couple of times where that wasn't exactly what I, I heard in that meeting. So I think more, in my opinion, the more opportunity we give to make sure that staff and applicants are hearing council's voice on it, I think is important.
That's a bullet.
Great.
Okay, so what we can do, Mayor and Council, is because there's no requirement to have it come back on the date that the attorney mentioned, we'll just note in the, on the pre-post this Wednesday that that's been, that's being rescheduled to a future date. And then when we, we'll then put it back on the agenda when the work's ready to bring it back to, to have it more closely match Broomfield's process.
I apologize for last week. My mind was on doing everything right for Jody, and I hadn't gotten ahold of the mayor, and so I apologize for making that sort of a mess.
Sneak stuff past the city manager.
Really late in the day, we had a proclamation request for, it will be used for Hometown Christmas, but the person receiving it will be Russ Sanders because he has played Santa at Hometown Christmas for years, and this will be the first year he won't be, but they are honoring him to have his name on the angel that's on the fence that when they, at the family that gets honored, and he will be lighting the tree this year. So they would like to know if the pro, first of all, if you're willing to do the proclamation, if it can be the last city council meeting in November because they would read it at the event December, that Friday, December 3rd or 2nd, whatever is the first November. Is everybody okay with that proclamation?
Yes.
That's all I had. So, did you have anything?
I do. I had inclusivity board this last week, and they had a presentation from Kate on homelessness, and so they had a lot of questions and recommendations and discussions about how they could help that process. I know if you remember, we put Alan Barb on that group, so obviously we're all well aware that that's definitely his passion. So there are a lot of interesting ideas that came out of that as far as like things that, how they could participate in the process. Somebody had brought, they were talking about finding places for people to live, and, and I don't know if this is even possible, but one of the ideas that I thought of going through that is there a way that the city could partner with people who do have extra rooms to be able to vet people? So like potentially if they wanted to rent a room out so that we could help them do like background checks or something like that, because they wanted to find a way, and that's a way that, you know, you're connecting people with places to live, because one of that, you know, just the areas they were talking about was being able to find something affordable. And so that was just, you know, an idea talking with them. But the other thing I wanted to bring up out of that conversation, though, and I brought this up with, with them, and I've talked to the chair of the environmental advisory board about what I talked with council about, about whether or not they'd be willing, specifically those two, to be participants in our strategic planning next year. And so far, both of them sounded like they really thought that was value to them, because then they would feel like there's more direction, I think. So I hope we can continue those conversations, and I don't know the right way to kind of get council's blessing on that and then talk with those groups to try to line that up for next year. So that was a conversation that, that I had with them off of, you know, some of their continued asks so that we kind of get the best value out of what they're trying to work on, I guess.
Would it be better to have the strategic planning and then meet with them, that since we're the ones held accountable for strategic plan?
I don't, I don't think that that would be a bad thing. I just think having some sort of component where then we're going with them and saying, okay, here's goals that we would like, you know, that we think you match up with, and then helping them have, you know, kind of an offshoot strategic planning, that's how that, that's what, how they're going to accomplish it. And then also, you know, how does that line up with their, their board goals? I think one of the challenges specifically with either of those groups, what I've seen over the five years I've been on, is where their charge is vague enough that, you know, they're kind of going out and deciding like what things they, they're going to fit into that. And I, I don't want this to sound like I don't think that it's not valuable, but when they're trying to do 10 things all the time, they're not really accomplishing anything. I mean, just like we really pared down in our strategic plan to say, here's the key things that we're going to focus on. I don't think that we're setting them up to really make ground, and I see members get frustrated and feel like they're not doing anything. And look at the turnover specifically on those boards over the last five years. It's been a lot of turnover because they don't feel like, you know, they're getting to provide value or they want it to be able to make a move, be it in environmental issues or inclusivity. And I think that it would make them more powerful boards if we could start helping make sure that they're checking some stuff off and making some accomplishments. Again, not that what they do isn't a value, but, you know, it's, you know, they try to come up with projects and stuff, and they don't seem like they're, they're keeping ground. Or there's some things right now that I don't know that the, they haven't even brought up forward to council, so they're spending all this time on, on proposal, then wanting to bring it forward and, and ask whether or not we even want it. There's one specific one around safe spaces and businesses that they've, and land acknowledgement, those have been both in the works for over a year, and they haven't even brought it forward. So, you know, I just, and again, if you guys think I'm totally off, like obviously this, it's up to the majority of council whether or not we, we do this, but being the liaison to those boards, I feel like we could help them accomplish more.
Two items. I was at the personnel board and they met, and again, they don't have any challenges brought before them, but it was used as a proactive session to like explore future personnel matters that could possibly come before them and sort of inform all, everybody on the board of, give them a background of the basic rule. Number two was the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Community Roundtable, noise roundtable. There were some emails, or some texts back and forth, and okay, Commissioner Tharp is trying to gently move the process along. Well, the mayor signed an excellent letter today, which was sent out to the, of the president of the roundtable, giving them a better understanding of what our really requests were. And in a very nice way, she put bullet points as to what we needed, and then we put in our, like initial rest recommendation as to what might be looked at and edited. So we might be making progress there.
Just tried to make it, there was one part that I Xed out, and Teresa was wonderful working with me, but if I got my hackles raised, I thought, oh, Lord, this will never, you don't want this. So actually, we just took that totally out because they know where we're at with our money and stuff, so we took that one out and just tried to make it a suggestion of how to operate as a whole and everybody be on the same page. Thanks. Ms. Emmons?
I was out of town for work last week, but I did attend Beverly Capra's funeral on Saturday and learned a little bit more history about history of Westminster and the area around it. So it was a good turnout and was good to see a lot of folks for the funeral.
It was a good history lesson.
That's a Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a retrospect to last week, because we did run out a little bit of time on that, and I want to, I had the opportunity to visit the Citizens Police Academy on Wednesday evening. Just they had sent out a, a note to all alumni that are always invited to attend, but there was the presentation on the body worn cameras, and I think that was, that was really invaluable to take part in that and really understand the, the technical side of that, too. So if, if next year that comes around, I'm not sure if we need to have a full presentation on that to council, but it's, you know, available as part of their regular locations on Citizens Academy. So it was especially from the, the personnel side, what, what goes into that and why we've had to make a personnel commitment on that side. So, yeah, and I had, this last week, I was out of town, not for work, so nothing to report on from just this last week.
And you would have loved the funeral, only that you would have heard ding, 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 as they shared that Bev and John Capra founded Wolf Run Park, started it, and made it for the community.
Wow, I didn't know that. That's great.
So we think a little wordage added to a sign would be a easy fix. Oh, it was good. Okay, sorry to take all that. We have a Knox Court report?
Yes. I'll ask Eric Otzelberger to come up and provide a brief update on our progress on Knox Court.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council, good to see you this evening. Enjoy, and I are here to talk about short-term rentals, so it's not just Knox Court. But just to be, be brief, we're, we're almost done with the debris removal and the asbestos abatement, so talking with the crews today, basically the last of the contaminated debris should be removed from the property this week. from the property this week. Uh, the crews will start dismantling the full containment structure this week. So that should be something that the residents start to see. Uh, you know, it's just remarkable. Um, we'll, we'll see if we can get a final weight or volume on the magnitude of, of stuff that was taken off there, but just soil alone. Because per the major spill and the explosion, um, three of those gigantic shipping containers just full of soil per the state regs and, um, having to remove the contaminated topsoil from the property. So it's, it's quite remarkable, um, the just tedious, complex labor intensive work that the contractor has done. Uh, today I, I volleyed over a contract amendment to Dave Frankel's office, um, to, um, remove the foundation and then backfill and grade the site. Uh, because once all the debris was removed, it became evident that, um, the foundation was damaged beyond, beyond repair or beyond any practical, um, adaptive reuse that may or may not happen in the future. So, um, we're working through that contract amendment, but that should be able to sync up. I mean, there's still some work to be done as far as dismantling the structure, uh, and what have you. And then, uh, on the ownership front, last week with the assistance of Deputy City Attorney Greg Graham, I think we've come to an agreement in, in principle. We just have to execute it now with the junior lien holder on the property. That's Ken McFarland, um, properties. You know, we're, we'll, we'll make, um, that entity whole, which is basically, um, we offered compensation for their original lien amount and attorney's fees. So the total on that equals about 15,000 in exchange for release of their lien. Um, and then, uh, as I mentioned previously, Reverse Mortgage Funding LLC and HUD have both released their deeds of trust. So we're getting down to a point where it will just be that the city and Betty Doyle, um, have been in discussions with Ms. Doyle. And once we're, we're clean, I think we, we have avenues we can work to kind of explore what the future might, might hold. And, and speaking of liens, we did place, we as the city, a $200,000 lien on the property for the work completed thus far. Um, just to kind of stake our investment in this property. So that's, uh, that's what I have and would be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we'll talk Airbnb, Airbnb in a little bit.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay. Presentation of Legacy Foundation.
Yes, I'm going to ask, uh, our Director of Parks, Recreation and Libraries to introduce the presenters tonight. Tomas?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, good to be here this evening. As I, my boss said, I'm Tomas Reda Michler, the Director of Parks, Recreation and Libraries. And I'm joined this evening by Nicole Mile, who is the Chair of the Foundation and Natalie Martinez, who is the Executive Director. So Westminster Legacy Foundation's been the city's philanthropic partner since 2001, when it was established by former Mayor Nancy Heil. And really to enhance our community and to advance the quality of life for the residents here in our city. And since it was established, uh, the foundation's done a lot of really great things for our community. Just a couple of them include the recently opened nature play, playground down at Westminster Station. They secured some significant grant funding for that. And as, as well as just helping the community heal by helping to raise the funds for the Jessica Ridgeway Memorial Park. Uh, they've played a, a great role and we'll be talking a little bit more about some of the contributions that the foundation has made. In 2016, the city signed an MOU with the foundation and it set up a 10-year agreement that it gradually would reduce the city's, uh, funding and oversight of the foundation and its staff and operations. So we're now about, we're halfway through that 10-year agreement. And we all know what's happened in the last couple of years. Um, unfortunately, the really carefully structured agreement has been really negatively impacted by the disruptions of a global pandemic and some unexpected staff turnover. This evening we'll be presenting a draft MOU that maintains the same approach of reducing city support and oversight and within the same timeframe as, uh, the original MOU or the existing MOU proposes. But in order to accomplish this pretty ambitious goal, uh, additional funding is initially needed to give the foundation the opportunity to build out that base of donors through a sustainable giving program that'll launch in January. This will help the foundation establish a really strong base of unrestricted, unrestricted giving. And we believe that this agreement, the proposed agreement will set the foundation up to be completely financially self-sufficient by 2027, as originally envisioned by the existing MOU. It's my pleasure to, uh, turn the presentation over to Nicole Milo at this time, uh, Foundation Chair, as well as Natalie Martinez to provide you more information about this draft.
Thank you, Tomas. Mayor, Mayor Protem and councilors, it's my honor and privilege to be here in front of you this morning or this afternoon. Boy, the day goes quickly, doesn't it? Oh my gosh. Um, to kind of walk you through a little bit about the Westminster Legacy Foundation in case you are unfamiliar. So up on the screen you will see, um, our mission and, um, vision for the organization. And as Tomas, um, mentioned, the intent of the foundation was really to, um, enrich, enrich the lives of the Westminster residents, um, and really drive philanthropy into the city of Westminster. And so it's been through that work, um, and it became far more organized, as Tomas mentioned, and we're going to talk through the timeline in just a minute. In 2016, when we made the conscious decision to hire an executive director to help really guide our work and a strategy um, behind that work and what we're doing inside of the city. So next slide, please. Um, so this gives you an overall timeline of the Westminster Legacy Foundation. So as you can see, we were founded in 2001 by, um, Mayor Heil. Um, and, and then from 2008 and to present, we have worked, um, side by side with the city of Westminster on a, the identification of projects, um, that would really enrich the lives of the citizens in the city. That coupled with, um, working alongside of the nonprofits that serve, a lot of our underserved inside of the city. And so it has been our pleasure and, um, we have an immense amount of pride about some of the projects that we have completed in conjunction with the funds that have been allocated, allocated to nonprofits inside of the community, um, that have really helped them carry their mission forward to, again, to directly impact the lives of the Westminster residents. So as I mentioned, 2016 is when we really, um, put our, um, put some strategy behind the Westminster Legacy Foundation and hired our very first executive director. And that is when the MOU initially began. And so after 2016, um, we were chugging along very nicely. Um, and you'll see that it will be indicative of some of the projects that we're very excited about. Um, but in 2022, um, well, in 2016, we had 2016, we all know what happened in 2020. Um, we lost our executive director, our second one, um, in the middle of COVID. She had to relocate to the East Coast due to a family issue. Um, and then in 2022, um, we were able and lucky enough to, um, secure Natalie Martinez, who you'll hear from in a few minutes. Um, and as we move forward and pivot out of, um, these COVID and pandemic times into more concentrated philanthropy in the city, we'll be launching our, um, giving program, which will, will be kicking off through a board retreat next month. So, um, just to highlight some of the key projects that we're the most proud of, and you'll see these on the screen. Um, in 2008, we, um, helped the city with the Armed Forces Tribute Garden at a total of 178,000. In 2013, um, like Tomas mentioned, we helped establish the Jessica Ridgway, uh, Memorial Park at the tune of 130,000 after that, um, unfathomable tragedy in our city. Um, in 2018, um, we were very excited to partner with the city and raise $200,000 to help, um, close the funding gap for the nature playground. And that was, um, a very proud moment for us as a board as we were there to cut the ribbon. Um, just last fall, I believe that was. Um, and then, um, obviously through 2020 and 2021, while, um, we were handicapped, um, with, um, fundraising, we were able to, to pivot and secure a significant amount of grants to help those in, that, uh, were experiencing the most need during COVID. And so that was, um, a very proud moment for us that while we couldn't actively fundraising and we had some limitations, we were still able to provide, to be a strong resource for the city during that challenging time. Um, so the next slide, um, really leans into kind of how this all is tied together. And I want to pitch it back to Tomas because he does such an incredible job of articulating that, um, interwovenness between, uh, the foundation and the city. Tomas?
I thought it was really important to refer back to the city's strategic plan. And so there's two priorities that really sort of leapt off the page to be as we think about how the foundation can enhance the city's work. And certainly a shared sense of community was right at the top. Just this idea of fostering, uh, opportunities for everyone. Uh, and creating the sense of community and connectedness, uh, that is, I think, a key, goal of the, of the strategic plan. And then secondly, of course, quality of life is another one that I thought really, uh, resonates with what the foundation is trying to accomplish. So the, just the amenities and activities for everybody who's in the city. And I particularly like the, um, the work that they do to honor the city's history and support arts, parks, recreation, open spaces and libraries selfishly. But I, I do believe that those two strategic priorities really, um, resonate with, with the foundation. Next slide, please.
It drives our work for sure.
And so I have a mayor, Mayor Protem and councilors. Um, I have the, um, pleasure to talk about our giving priorities. So we want to close funding gaps, whether it's with city projects or with nonprofits. Um, and we have three kind of big buckets. They're broad. Um, we want to be uplifting arts, culture and education. That gives us the opportunity, as Tomas and Nicole said about working in historic Westminster, you know, helping hopefully to build a nice theater down there. Um, education, looking at, um, some of our more under-resourced schools and providing scholarships to students that are marginalized and that may not have the means to go onto a secondary, uh, educational track. We also want to support, or we want to actually change the word from support to strength in humanity in Westminster. So we will focus also on basic needs, but we can also focus on our older adults, our veterans, our families. So it's not just basic needs that is, I feel a very more, a more narrow category than working with a broader population. And then also, of course, as to Tomas's points, elevating nature and recreation. So we do have opportunities for everyone in the city, whether they're in North Westminster or South Westminster. So we will be working, right now we're currently, um, writing grants and working, uh, we'll be at the breakfast. We'll be asking for support for the Irving Street Library Playground. So we, you know, we, we definitely love being a partner with the city. Um, we also like to be the catalyst of philanthropy here in the city of Westminster. And, you know, giving opportunities for people to give how they like, when they like, and for what they like. Um, so we're here to help build a thriving, dynamic and extraordinary city of Westminster for everyone. And like Nancy Heil had, for now and for future generations.
Uh, next slide, please. But just to break it down for you a little bit, um, again, we're working within the same timeframe as the existing MOU. The changes really looking at, um, as you can see on the graph, increasing the city's support initially uh, to 80% with the foundation putting up 20% of the, um, this is specific to the executive director's salary. Uh, and then decreasing each, uh, year, uh, bringing that down, uh, quickly. Um, but we'll point out that the first year is 2022 and we're reaching the end of that. So, uh, there's a little bit of catching up there, but, um, the idea is that by year five, or year 10, I guess, but year five of this MOU, the city's portion would only be 20% and, um, the foundation would be 80. And then the other component to this agreement is that in year three, 2026, uh, sorry, four, 2024, um, the entire responsibility of managing, uh, the executive director, oversight of the ex, uh, executive director would completely switch to the foundation. And this person would, or Natalie, whoever's in the seat would no longer report to me or be a city employee. So I think you all know that I have an extensive background, my whole career working in public-private partnerships. And in looking at the past 20 years of work to try to launch this foundation, um, I think that while the city's been incredibly supportive and generous, um, there's a downside to that too. And that by giving them this sort of push to get it going in a really great direction um, and taking advantage of all the hard work that's been done so far, but then cutting the cord would be one, will really help this organization to thrive. I've, I've seen many, many public-private partnerships that that's really the key to their success. Is they have to own their own future, own their own finances. Next slide, please.
Say it again.
Next slide, please. There we go. With all that being said, it's time for any of your questions that we might be able to answer.
Esther Baker?
Okay. Can you give us, well, the history of the funding by Westminster of the foundation?
So you're asking if I can give, let you know where the funding has come from for the Westminster Legacy Foundation?
I was hoping more for how many dollars every year have we been kicking in? Because I bring the, uh, unique perspective that I was on council in 2016. And at that time, we were giving the foundation a place to be and we were paying half the salary of a secretary. So it was probably costing the city $70,000. Or that's a rough estimate. And it's how do you value that? And the whole point was, uh, with my understanding, we didn't want the foundation to be an appendage of the city. And cut the ribbon or cut the cord or, which is a, by, by the way, uh, so I'm really frankly disappointed that you're still an appendage and it sounds like we're giving you even more money than we were in 2016. So how much money are we, have we given you for the last three years?
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that, but we can get it to you, counselor.
Well, we're making decisions now. Getting it to be later really is not very helpful.
Counselor, if I could, Mayor, so the current, uh, agreement that's in place that was entered into in 2016 provides the city's, uh, contribution in years six through 10 would be $25,000 per year. So that's the level of support that is currently contemplated in that agreement. And the first five years of the agreement had higher levels of support, um, where the city was paying 50,000, 51,000, 46,000, 41,000 in each of those years.
And then in the final four years, what was the city going to pay?
25,000 per year.
I thought that was the first six.
Sorry, it was the final five of the 10-year agreement. So we're in the final five right now of that agreement. The initial five.
What was the agreement for the first five then?
Approximately 50,000.
Okay.
So, yeah, it has tapered off from 50,000 down to 25,000.
What, do they have a place in our city? Do we give them office space?
Yes. Office space, computer and, uh, a really great boss.
Okay. My question is, I had hoped that the foundation would bring a different view. I mean, that's the whole point of being independent is to have a different view and not be an appendage or a surrogate for the council. And it sounds pretty much like you've done the council's bidding almost.
Can you lean into that a little bit more, councillor? I'm not sure I'm tracking where you're going with that.
Well, all the things you're doing aren't those decision of, those the vision of the city?
Actually, not, sir. We have been, always been asked if we would be willing to be a partner or close a funding gap on some specific projects. And so as a board, we have either chosen to engage on those projects or not. We have to look at the entire philanthropic landscape to understand that if we are going to come in as a partner with the city on a specific project, that we have the avenue, one, we have the donor database, we have the avenues to pursue funding through grant partners, and that it's in the best interest of all involved. So there have been projects, sir, that we have not funded, but there have been some that we felt were really important to the pillars and part of our strategy as an organization and really helped us not only move the needle forward for the residents in the city, but to also increase the visibility of the foundation so we could begin that pivot to more, to be more of a sustainable organization. Does that answer your question?
In part, yes, thank you. So basically, how much money do you have in a trust fund right now?
We are over $280,000.
You have $280,000 that you're holding in trust and you have a board of how many members?
Eighteen.
Eighteen members.
Sixteen.
And what other kinds of projects have you done besides the one you cited in the, in the slide you gave us?
Yes, so prior to COVID, we were a grant funding organization, grant-making organization, I'm sorry. So we would have not, not, non-for-profit partners who would, we'd have an open application process where they would reach out and request funds from our organization for a variety of projects within the city. And so we would partner with them for that. So we were doing that, that grant-making exercise all the way up to 2019. We were getting ready to announce our 2020 funding when COVID hit. And so that put a halt to all of that activity and we had to then pivot and figure out how we could best support those nonprofits in a really, really challenging philanthropic environment. I mean, every nonprofit, if you were to look at nonprofits across the country, everybody came to a screeching halt in COVID because you couldn't have the one-on-one interaction with individuals. And so nonprofits had to get very savvy and had to work tightly with grant funders and figure out different fundraising avenues to secure funds. And so once we were able to figure out that pivot, which took some creativity, we were then able to open up grants for nonprofit partners within the city. And so we were giving those out with board direction and not with city guidance.
Okay, but you obviously spent $75,000, was that in city in the COVID period, right? Seventy-five?
But we were absent in, I'm sorry to interrupt.
All right. Didn't we give seven, didn't you give 75 in grants?
We gave seventy. Yes, we did, because we were given those funds and then we reallocated them to the community.
And you were given those funds by the grants that you applied for and got? So you acted as the conduit for the end users?
So we did, and then we also had our own donors that came in to help us with the effort as well, because a lot of those grants were matching grants. And so we needed other funds to help all of the grants materialize for the delivery of those grants.
And how much is the overhead of your organization?
Currently, it is just our staff member.
So in dollars, what would that be? A hundred thousand dollars?
It's estimated at $106,755 this year in 2022, although that, that's a full-year figure and Natalie's, she came in June, so about half that amount.
Our, our budget is roughly $140,000 for this year. Again, I came in, in June. And I do want to speak a little bit, I understand, I can, I understand a bit of the frustration, but I come with a lot, over 30 years of experience. And I have turned other organizations, another foundation around when it literally had $50,000 in the bank. So I think, given the chance and given the opportunity to show you what I can do along with my team, which is the board and Tomas and Parks and Rec, I think you will see a different outcome in three years. I, I'm not sure how else to say that. We are creating a sustainable giving program that I have done before. We are going to turn that into a major gifts pipeline and it's a multi-year giving program. So it's not just, Barbara, can I have $5,000 this year and that's it? We want to make sure that we have continued unrestricted income, that we are able to, whether we choose to partner with the city or whether we chart, choose to partner with a nonprofit or a school or create a scholarship, that we have the resources and able to do that. And we have the resources to have our own overhead and our own offices and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
First, thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate your time. I have had the privilege of giving to the foundation before and used to be a regular sponsor when they did the wine tasting, which I'm disappointed we don't do anymore.
Stay tuned.
This year.
We could get at least one sponsor, you let me know. But I know the challenges around some of these, like I helped fundraise on, actually the first thing I did in the city was work with the Legacy on the Ridgeway Memorial Park. So I, I see the value in this and I have to say, I appreciate the direction that you're trying to go though and go on your own. And I do think that that drive, that pressure will, I hope, drive the organization to better success. So I appreciate what direction you're asking for us to bless and I'm on board with it.
Thank you councillor and for your support.
I agree.
I, I do appreciate the fact that we have a definitive timeline and, you know, it's an underlying thought, the pressure's on you as it, as it may be, you know, also looking at the, the fact that sometimes it's, it's, you need, you need those to drive organizations to create a sense of urgency. I can understand how this will lay on you, but I appreciate what the board has done. And I, you know, I hope it'll be a great thing from a standpoint, it'll be our last financial MOU too.
That's certainly the plan.
Yeah, now that you just said that, I do, sorry, I do have a question is, and this might be too far in the future, but once you break from the city and you only have, would you start building your staff under that then as far as?
That's my hope.
So then office space and all of that will then come after?
Right.
Okay.
If I could, Mayor, for councillor Emmons, the office space would start, I think, January 1st of '25, when the employee becomes a foundation employee rather than a city employee. That's the tipping point. It's January of '25.
Thank you for that.
I just want to say, the last time I probably was with Nancy Heil was dedication at the Irving Street Library with the bronze statues. And she loved kids. She loved this community. And I think she would say, thank you for living out her dream, not the city's dream, but her dream. And you have done probably everything she would have directed you to do if she were here to share that with you. So thank you. I know sometimes, I know we struggle during that time, trying to get it put together with her condition by that time. We really, we had to base it on what we knew her dream was, but we couldn't talk through and flesh out a lot of things. So you've all done a great job. And the only question I had, well, one thing I was going to share with you and Kate, because I know from your reports, helping during COVID and stuff, I just want to put on your radar that Tri-City Baptist is a 501(c)(3) with their food bank. And they're the only Jeffco food bank for Westminster. And when they started, five years ago, they had 250 household members they were helping. When COVID hit, they jumped over 1,000, went to 1,200. With the inflation, they're over 1,300 a week that they are helping. So they do that with no help from anybody but the church and their members and people do have an opportunity to give whatever in a jar if they want to help. They used to be able to use their gym and put it all out. They had wagons and everything, so people could really shop with dignity. I love that and I can't wait till they can do that again, because that way they were truly buying like a grocery store with, but they would use not what you're just giving them in a, a box. But they too had to pivot during COVID. They didn't miss a beat, even though they had two trucks stolen during that time. They have had everything put in front of them and they just keep, people keep giving and steering new trucks to their direction and everything. So they're, they're a great group doing things very quietly for the community and I just wanted to know that. Also, when I was reading, I know Tomas and our city manager are members and it said we have up to three. And so has there ever been a council member as one of those three?
Barbara says yes.
I believe, or Bajaj said it was when he was mayor.
Yes, that is correct.
I'm, I'm sure there were others prior to that, but that was recently.
Anything prior to him would predate me, but you are correct.
So I don't know what you, I don't know what three you had in the present past. Do we want three? I just wanted to bring that up since we were discussing it tonight.
Could, not a bad idea.
Currently, we have Tomas, Cody, and Andy Lied, that are our three City of Westminster board members. It doesn't pre, just, I mean, we have to have three. It doesn't mean we can't have more.
I just read what it said and those are the three people.
I believe the bylaws don't preclude an additional.
I just, just asking. Any last things? Yes.
Oh, where are we going to? It'll be about $100,000 for this new MOU, right? Or less?
This year it'll be $85,404 and it goes down, half of that because of your starting mid-year.
Yeah.
And then it goes down 60% of the executive director's salary in year two, 40%, 30%, 20%, and then zero.
Year six.
And year six, yeah.
So it'll be about $140,000 then? Because of its 40-something this year?
No, it's, so the total city investment, let's see, I need to subtract 40,000 for that, 200 and something, 200 and something thousand dollars.
Right, and we would have put in $100,000, $25,000 a year.
Yeah. So I estimated that with the current MOU, it would be $122,000 for the city and the foundation would be 490. And we're, we're basically flipping that to the city would be 280 and the foundation would be 292.
Right, so my question is, where are we getting the 180, somewhere between 100 and $180,000 more dollars? Where are we getting that in our budget? Are we taking it from someplace else?
So I believe these were already built into some of the projections for next year, so.
So you just assumed?
No, we were just trying to work through the different scenarios. And at the time, when the budget was, we had to plug in what we knew at the time. Obviously, if it didn't cost that much, then there were savings available.
Oh, no, it's in the relative range of things, $180,000 isn't much at all.
Well, we only budgeted for the 23, because that's all that's been before city council.
Everyone, okay, moving forward?
Well, I'm opposed, but I can count to.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Come back if you need us. Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Mayor, before our second item, I think councillor Emmons has a question about excusing attendance tonight. Neither one is available, though the charter speaks to regular meetings in terms of absences. Council's desire is to make a statement on the subject, have a study session, you certainly can, it's just not mandated in the same way that it would be for a regular meeting at the DICE.
And I think we just leave it as it is, we know that they're gone.
Good question. Who's tracking that? Like where are the, are attendance sheets somewhere?
So the Charter 5.2, well, as far as which staff member is counting unexcused absences, the Charter 5.2 threshold would be 25% of the meetings within a fiscal year for four consecutive regular meetings. I don't think we've had any four consecutive regular meetings missed. And I don't know that anyone's any close to the 25% of the year threshold on regular meetings.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that they probably would. I mean, that'd be extraordinary, but I know when the city got bigger on boards and commissions, there was discussion around making sure that there was actually record of it, because when it started becoming a problem, then it was a problem to go back and see where they really missing X amount. So I guess it would be good if we had somewhere where we're keeping record that people could easily refer to.
I think we could certainly check the minutes of each meeting and what ends tally up. Of course, those are unexcused meetings and normally the practice would be to excuse those in excuse, excuse those that are absent, that I wouldn't start the pocket all under the.
And as I read the charter, doesn't that just apply to regularly scheduled city council meetings?
Correct. Not study sessions. It's regular meetings.
Okay, next up.
Right, thank you, Mayor. Next up, we have updates and options for the city-owned property located at West 73rd Avenue and Lowell Boulevard. And I'll ask Lindsay Kimball, our Director of Economic Development, to introduce the team and begin the presentation.
Thank you, Jody. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and councilors. I'm Lindsay Kimball, your Economic Development Director. I have with me, Zane Trawler, Business Resilience Manager, and Molly Thayer, your Housing Coordinator. Tonight, we would like to share with you an update on the current status and overview of some of your options for reprogramming city-owned property at 73rd and Lowell on July 25th. You might remember on July 25th, 2022, city council directed staff to explore the community's vision for the property consistent with the proposal that was submitted by the Heart of Westminster Group. And I see Mr. Shea is with us tonight and thank you for being here. And for an outdoor community event space, we want to thank all of the community members who joined us for these conversations, all of the good folks at the Irving Street Library, the MAC, and Westminster Presbyterian Church, who were very kind and hosted us for several of the meetings, and our colleagues in PRL who attended and supported those conversations. We gathered the input from the community during the meetings, which Molly will describe in greater detail in just a moment. There was consensus reached around an outdoor community event space, which would be nimble and versatile and responsive to the needs of the local residents. I wanted to frame this conversation before we jump into the presentation and just share with you at the outset that there's two decision-making points throughout the presentation that staff is seeking direction on. One is whether or not this body concurs with the proposed new use of an outdoor community event space. And if yes, staff will continue to investigate and examine feasibility, operations, styles, management structures, funding, et cetera, to move forward with that use. And the second... And the second decision point is this body's direction to staff relative to our relationship with HUD at the site moving forward. So there's two choices there. It's A, pursue a change of use with HUD or remain federalized, or B, pursue a workout agreement with HUD and de-federalize the property. So there's pros and cons to both of these, and at the end of the presentation, we will present those both in an objective manner. But first, I'm going to turn it over to Molly, who is going to provide you some background on the property from acquisition to current status, as well as an overview of those recent community meetings where we discussed the future of the property. And again, I'll rejoin the conversation at the end of our presentation and talk through those two options that I've mentioned to you at the outset. And we would like to respectfully request, when we present our PowerPoint, we can take questions at the end. Thank you, Molly.
Okay, next slide. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council. Great to be back with you again. Many of you know where this is, but we do have a map on the screen on the right-hand side. We have, our subject is six parcels that were purchased by the city, starting in around 2004, but for purposes of our discussion, we look at this, this date as being a economic development holding purchased with federal funding by 2012. Staff in that era took some previously acquired properties, acquired some others, and bundled it all for the purpose of doing a revitalization project. So you see on the screen the dates for this acquisition and how it all came together. The information that we have today that defines for us what was intended is captured in the Section 108 loan application and contract that we made with HUD at that time. And what was described was a redevelopment initiative to revitalize this block. It included a proposal for both affordable housing as well as a micro loan fund to help any small businesses that would choose to operate here as well. Next slide, please. A little bit more detail on all of this. In 2004, those of you who were paying attention to the development that was growing up along Lowell, saw the townhouses that were built on the west side on the north side of 73rd Street, and know that there was a local development corporation that sought to do more redevelopment. So some of the parcels were purchased at that time to support commercial space and townhomes. That product did not move forward. In 2012, again, the conversation continued, and this is when the staff for the Community Development Block Grant Program went to HUD and procured a $2 million Section 108 loan. And the goal of that investment was to develop all six parcels on this block with a mixed-use development that would include both first-floor retail and/or business use, and then two to three stories of housing above the first floor. At the, in the early documentation, it was described as being 44 units of affordable housing. And all of this was envisioned to wrap the Penguin Building and be sort of a combined operation and synergistic use. Those, there was one project initially that was proposed for this, and they were unable to procure the other financing that they need for the deal. The second developer that approached the city came forward, and they were not successful as well. And the city had to reimburse them some of their costs, and they left probably around 2015, 2016. I don't have the exact date on that. So in 2016, as the city staff is filing with HUD again, we of course hear back from our federal partner that we are out of compliance, in that we have invested money for multiple years now with no result. So our objective since that time has to, been to bring this property into compliance with our federal partner. As those of you who were with us last year and the years before know, we had another development partner, 2018 forward, the not-for-profit, directly across the street, Community Resources and Housing Development Corporation, had proposed to build senior housing on the site. And as of 2021, they were unable to move forward with that proposal as well. Next slide. I have touched on this in the past, so I don't want to go too deep in it, but I tend to, so I'll try and save this for some questions, because there are often many. The site, since we owned it, since the city has owned it, has been plagued with environmental contamination, multi-site, multi-source, rather. Underneath the three northernmost parcels is a groundwater plume that resulted from a gas station that was located on the northwest corner of the T intersection, that is 73rd Lowell, 73rd Avenue and Lowell. That now has been remediated to a standard that is described by our, our state regulator, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, as being able to support residential development, which was the application we made with state at the time that the cleanup began. Residential development is the highest level of cleanliness and the highest, most impactful level of use, putting housing on top of this. So the, the answer to that is, it's, it's a pretty clean site. What they do require in the ongoing voluntary cleanup plan and our NEPA Part 50 filing with HUD is that the city never drill a well and try and use groundwater there, and that any structure that is built on the site that has a foundation needs to provide a vapor barrier, it can be passive or active, to remediate any groundwater that might permeate through the soil. What, what the engineering firm that performed the cleanup has told us, though, is that it's, it's clean from the carbon-injected treatment that they performed, and over time, the remaining contaminants will self-mitigate through the ground soil issues. We've been working with HUD for a long time to get this property ready to go. We had to tear down the buildings on the site in order to prepare it for proposed development. And so, just as we heard a little bit earlier from Eric with regard to Knox Court, we performed a little over 200,000 in asbestos remediation and cleanup on this site as well. And that now has been studied and measured, and there is no marked measurements, there's no contaminants in the soil that achieve any measurable standards. So it is, again, very clean and ready to go. Next slide. As we were discussing back in July, we are an entitlement program, meaning that we receive community development block grant funds every year from HUD. We do not need to apply for it. We've been selected and evaluated to be an entitlement community. So the state or a municipal jurisdiction or a tribe is that we use that fund, those funds to benefit our low and moderate income population. We can do that in multiple ways. We do it most specifically under the major objective of HUD in terms of providing affordable housing when we support housing development in one way, shape, or form, and we provide housing in our community. That is what is known as an LMI benefit, because we are specifically targeting a low and moderate income individual. We may also use that funding to provide what is, what is shorthanded and referred to as an LMA benefit, a low moderate area benefit. And that is an investment in the community that serves, serves a census block area that also qualifies to receive federal funding. This neighborhood does qualify for an LMA benefit. As you all might remember too, we operate under a five-year consolidated plan. Our current plan was submitted to HUD and accepted in 2021, early 20, it was accepted in 2021 as a result of the pandemic, but it goes from 2020 to 2024. And then we also operate under an annual plan. The annual plan is what articulates the work that then rolls up and provides our, meets our five-year responsibility. Next slide. So we left here hearing from our council that we should investigate with our community the viability of a change of use for this site, and a, a change of use that would look much like or be thematically related to that which the Heart of Westminster presented to you in June. We ended up putting together some community meetings very quickly, and we had four of those between August and the beginning of September. I have brought for you the ground rules that we placed on the wall for each of these meetings, just so to kind of carry forward the spirit and theme of the work we performed. We started off on August 4th with about 50 people in the room, and during that, we identified the values between the audience, all of the audience in, in the room, that people wanted to step forward and work together inside of. And with that, we created our ground rules, and so we use them for all of our meetings. We also had simultaneous translation at each of these meetings, and we released all of our information in English and Spanish. It can all be found in, on the, the project website, which is still posted today, and I will be updating it because I received more comments today. During that time, we asked people about other unidentified needs that they thought would be valuable to include in a reprogramming of this site. What we came down to were four main themes. As you see on the screen, we have, we had a lot of wish list retail items. We had people who have grown up in this neighborhood and want to go back to the ice cream and are really missing that hometown neighborhood feel. We heard from people who wanted some community services on different levels. And we also heard from housing advocates. Housing advocates came in the door and said that housing is still a very critical need. And to paraphrase the mayor, we all agreed that we need housing everywhere, all over. So the consensus level agreement that we achieved on September 14th was to go forward and explore an open-air community gathering space, and to do so by including some of the other needs and objectives identified by the people. We had a set of, of flip charts that we had people mark up and put Post-it notes to, and I've got them in English and Spanish here, with the tally and counts of all of the different retail uses and services and wish list items that our community wanted to see. But ideally, what they came down to was if we could program the three northernmost parcels to serve, serve community events, to perhaps create a farmer's market space, to bring in that grocery truck we've heard about from Baker and from the neighbors who are trying to find affordable and accessible shopping, to, you know, allow for youth events and, and just make this a very vital community center. Our, our residents in this area have, have signaled that that would be a very profound benefit for them. And with that, I'm passing it over to Lindsay Kimball again. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Molly. Okay, and at the beginning, I told you there were some options that we would like to get your opinion on and your direction. And the first one here is that question of de-federalization or remaining federalized with the site. So let's walk through the, the facts around de-federalization of the site. So it would provide you with the greatest amount of flexibility for a use, primarily because you would not be tied to HUD in lockstep with them, so you wouldn't be subject to the monitoring and, you know, the reporting and all of the federal processes and rules that go with that, that often, you know, a general rule of thumb can add 20 to 30% to the project cost, just in general terms, because of the regulations and the reporting and the time spent. It could, you could de-federalize, and you would have to negotiate back a payment to HUD. There, we're still in very early conversations, don't have a number to throw out there, but it generally is negotiated, and it would be potentially equivalent to the fair market value of the site, plus any additional amounts that they may require us to pay back to them. So that is another factor to consider. Also, the city could proceed with the open-air venue concept, as well as any other use, as I said, without that encumbrance of federal regulations, monitoring, and reporting. So basically, de-federalization, but you also would be giving up the federal funding, obviously. So they do like the concept. We've run it past our HUD representatives regionally, that the open-air venue concept, they really appreciated the public process. So there's, there's pluses and minuses to both of these. Of course, if you de-federalize, we would not be able to use future CDBG allocations towards the construction, the outfitting of this open-air space. Next slide, please. And the other side of the coin is proceed with HUD through a change of use process. So we've, we've gone through, as we've explained, the community process and outreach. So we've got, you know, we, we started in that direction, we had to with either one of these choices. So we're over on, on path to talk about a change of use and a substantial amendment to, as Molly explained, the consolidated plan. So there, of course, is a process with that, 45 to 60 days, public posting, review, comment period. Again, it's, it's always in negotiation with HUD, talking to them, informing them of what we planned. They, they know that we're walking this road right now, but, you know, formalizing that and getting their official approval on that. The site would then remain federalized. That's the, obviously, the major difference, and would be subject to federal approvals, regulations, monitoring, compliance. And of course, the plus side of this, you could, you could use CDBG money in the future to activate the site as a public open space. Next slide, please. And of course, we are seeking direction. We want to confirm with this body that you are in, in agreement with preferred use expressed by the community and the Heart of Westminster Group to have a open-air community gathering space concept. And regardless of status, if, if this is something that you would like staff to pursue, we of course would do the next step in the process, which is be, would be conducting that further analysis on feasibility, design, operations, who's, who owns it, who manages it, all of those nuts and bolts. We would really start to dig into the best management options and bring that back to this board. So again, in conclusion, option one, question number one that staff is seeking is, are you in alignment and agreement with this open-air community gathering concept? And two, staff would like direction on if we should proceed down the path with HUD and continue as a federalized site? And we will walk through that HUD change of use process, or two, de-federalizing, which is also a process that we would negotiate with HUD to do a workout with them from our current obligations. And next slide, please. We are happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Before we proceed, I'll go ahead and read into into our, Counselor Nammella's thoughts. For the 73rd and Lowell site, I would like to see us move forward with a use that is consistent with the original intent of purchasing the property. The amount of money and staff time already invested in efforts to contribute to the community should not be wasted. I would like to see this site fulfill the original intent of providing housing to the community, and at a minimum, a use that is consistent with HUD requirements. I do not support what I view as wasting city funds, which I assume will be in excess of $1 million to de-federalize the site. Let's find a way to support our community while being thoughtful, strategic, and thrifty with our dollars. Counselor Simar?
Hey, Madam Mayor. A couple comparing, contrast questions here on, on timing, first of all, is, is either one of them, if, if we set a, if we set a deadline and we would like this space activated no later than the end of May of 2023, either A or B, would either one of those be a greater roadblock than the other to do that?
I don't know the amount of timing it would require for us to adjust our it would require for us to adjust our budget, make a request to actually pay HUD back. So I can't build in that schedule. I have performed multiple substantial amendments and they typically take about three months, two to three months. So we would be able to start this work sometime end of Q1.
Thank you.
Councilor Baker?
How big are the sites, square feet?
Oh, repeat, I can't give you quickly.
I'm sorry. I can, it's about, in total, there's a north section, the Penguin Building, and then the bottom section. Together, the six parcels that we own is 1.09 acres.
So that's what, 45,000 square feet?
Yeah, about 45,000 square.
And I didn't understand when you said wrap. How do you wrap when the Penguin Building is the barrier in between? And you can't go over the top of it or underneath of it?
Yeah, it was going around. Yeah, it's going around. It would go around. The proposed development, Councilor, was to incorporate.
So you're talking about the alley?
It went behind, I think, what they call the barn. Incorporated taking down the barn, I believe, at one point. It's kind of like a lean-to barn.
Is there an alley on that street?
There is, but they were going to use, they were going to take, the barn is attached. It's like a lean-to to the Penguin Building. They were going to remove the barn. And I believe they were going to put parking there. And that would be, that would fulfill in the wrap of wrapping the, all the parcels together.
The barn doesn't belong to the Penguin Building?
No, it does belong to the Penguin. It's like a lean-to, so it was an added building at some point.
So we'd have to buy from the Penguin Building owner?
I believe so, yeah.
I believe that the property owners were involved in the conversations and would have been included in the development plan and how they might benefit.
Okay.
Sir, if I could, just to clarify, community open space, gathering space does not require us to do that. That conversation about wrapping the Penguin Building was from a previous iteration of a development proposal. So our current version of an open air gathering space, it's just not that, it's not as complicated as those earlier renditions.
And so what would be done with lots D E N F? If we went with the community space?
That is.
I would say it's all, yeah, to be determined. We really, I think, need to look at, as Lindsay, Director Kimball suggested, we really need to look at an operational plan and see how to best program the northern and southern lots.
And I don't think our council can move ahead without a price for de-federalizing it. To me, that's, you can't make that decision. If it costs $1,000, de-federalize it, we'd de-federalize it. If it costs a million and a half, well, probably not. So, and if it was a community ascent center, wouldn't it need some kind of parking for people? Because it's my understanding that, well, that the walk shed or something or other, whether it's a RTD train station or anything else that is roughly a quarter mile, 1,300 feet. So that wouldn't, because everything to the east is public school property. There's hardly anyone living anywhere south of 72nd. So you get no customers, no participants walking from there. So the only ones you'd get is sort of northeast of, well, and you'd get some once you get beyond a school property north. You have housing up there, but that's a very small community segment. So wouldn't they need some place to park? And the only parking there is on-street parking.
That's a very good question.
Yeah, if you pull up the map, there is a small, I think it's lot, referred to as lot E is parking.
It's on the second slot.
It's maybe 10 slots.
Yeah, but I mean, we have like city regs that say you have to have so many parking spaces for.
And that's what we would, that was, that would be one of the areas we would, we would investigate with.
D E N F.
Yeah, with the further.
What kind of modern sanitary facilities would have to be built if we build a community events place?
Councilor, if I may, I want to pick up right here for a second and also suggest too, that one of the things we heard from our community meetings and from the proponent for the event space is that this would largely be a benefit serving about a 10-block radius of this area. And a lot of our participants would be area residents, so.
So for that 10-block area?
I'm a mile and a half, maybe. I'm thinking about the census block area we're speaking to.
Oh, okay.
So we do believe that a part of this is geared towards serving and developing programming that would benefit the area residents.
But a large number of them could not walk.
A lot of them may thrive. So again, I just wanted to say though, in combination with the parking need, we expect also some, some local support for this. We, again, the analysis for how this would be operated and who would operate it is at your direction. And we, in temporary conversations with residents, with, you know, internal, kind of walking our staff through the area, talked about if we want to do this on a trial basis and set up sort of a skeleton set of structures that would support it for maybe a year or two at very little cost, we could also put down a pad and bring in orderlets for various events. And then just recycle that on an, you know, event-by-event basis.
Well, because when I had heard of this, it was proposed as a very low cost, almost, oh, there's nothing at zero cost, but a very low cost thing. But I don't think they'd want a permanent porta potty situation there.
Yeah, it would not be a permanent. That would simply be a, let's try it and let's create.
And I mean, right now, it's just big, really, construction fences and weeds, right?
That is true.
Okay, so we were trying to find something different from that. So you considered both a permanent design and a temporary design, temporary being three years or so.
Again, Council, we're very, very early. We have not put pen to paper nor hired any consultants nor sat down with landscape architects from our Parks Department to really begin to build the design.
And if I could, much like the sensitivities of the private sector developers who want to take some baby steps at first and just make sure that the concept is okay with this body, that's the same tact that staff is taking. We, we wanted to first ask you if the concept sounds right. And then we're fully prepared to go back and work with our partners to bring back that analysis and the feasibility and have all of those answers to your questions.
Is that, is that something we can do in-house? Or would we have to hire a consultant?
We've had some initial conversations. I think to do the financial modeling and really figure out who could actually run the programming of it, probably will need to be outsourced. We could do some of it inside with our existing staff. But a lot of the financial modeling will probably need to be outsourced.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilor Simmons?
Thank you for bringing this to us prior so that we could kind of talk through this. And I have a lot of questions that don't pertain to your direction because I know that will come later. And I appreciate the guidance and guardrails around the two things that you're looking for. But to be honest, it's hard to give direction without the details. I feel like the details are what matter in giving that direction. But I, again, I understand the reasons coming to council to present it ahead of time to understand if it's worth your while, right? So to answer your question about do we agree with the outdoor space, I agree with looking at this as an option. I will ask, do we know what we would get for the $50,000? So one of the questions came up about a consultant. Is that part of the cost? Are we looking at operationally at that point? Because I'm now thinking like, what are the enhancements that are we going to need for the site? It's a city-owned project, which means it has to be ADA compliant, which means that we have to put in the work for sidewalks and X, Y, Z to meet. So what does, what does that look like? I know that you don't have the answers to it, but this is the way I'm processing on giving you direction is the details I don't have, right? So I just, I want to know what the $50,000, although you should know what the $50,000 should go towards because you came up with the number in the first place. So that would be what I would want to know. And then do we want to change the status, either de-federalize or change the use? Again, that's hard because I don't know what the thought is. If we get into this and say it is a good outdoor space, well, then that leaves us with DEF. So do we want to de-federalize part of it or all of it? So I feel like we're missing a little bit of that piece as far as the details on what's the plan? Because if I had a better understanding of a forethought of what's the thought of this, then I could say, well, maybe de-federalize part of it. And I don't know, and that was my other question, is that what point do we need to move forward with making that decision on de-federalize or change the use? Can we hold on that and say yes on the, on looking at the outdoor space? Because then I could maybe give you a direction on do we want to de-federalize all of it or some of it?
Thank you. Right now, our conversations with our HUD Regionate staff is that they welcome doing a community-based project. They wanted us to do something with the neighborhood. They were excited that the neighbors had come to us with a proposal. To be fairly transparent, I've gone back and kind of iteratively carried them through our conversations with the residents and the internal thinking and coming here tonight. And I said, we're looking at use. We're looking at it, maybe it's a trial basis. I'll learn more. Don't know what the expenditure will be to get it going. And I said, but I think that there's really good community support and energy and enthusiasm for this. They said, that's great. If it's going to be a community use space, please use our money and please make this a partnership. If people from Loveland and Castle Rock and Telluride start coming to your fairs in Historic Westminster, you're going to be paying us back.
Which is fine, I think, if we reach that level of success.
So, so what we've heard is that we can do this for now as a federal project and get it up and running, unless there's some interest that we find out through this analysis, through a use analysis and understanding a little bit more about the market and, and what, what this could be, where we would come back to and say, really, to make this all it can be, we probably should have full control. And that, here's what that would cost.
I'm so sorry, if I could, if I could add on to that as well. Your question about do we need to do something now? I would say yes, because even back in 2016, we were getting nasty grams from HUD that you all are out of compliance. And they show up at our office and stand at Molly's desk and. What are you doing? What are you doing? So there is definitely some urgency, but the urgency really is, do we want to continue with this change of use? And it does seem like HUD is very excited about the prospect and is really happy with us with the community engagement process and the benefit to the neighborhood area. But we can't, doing nothing is not an option. We actually had that as option three on the slides. But then after conversing with Molly and Stephanie and HUD, there's, no, 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 you can't do nothing. You have to tell us something. Either continue forward with us in this change of use process or let's start the conversation about de-federalization.
Okay, because with that understanding, and it sounds like we could keep it as, as change of use for now. And maybe a year down the road, if we feel like we need to take it all back. I know that's a greater cost with inflation, with timing with X, Y, Z. But the information I have now, if you need an answer, is yes on looking at outdoor space and yes to change of use with the information I have right now.
So, Councilor Simmons, I just want to say, one of the things that Council Baker raised is that it is a construction fence with some weeds. And so one of the things we have not been as aggressive with as we would like to is getting a good maintenance plan in place. We were sort of waiting for this direction to also tell us how much money to put into that effort too. So I want to get that moving.
So you have, what do you need from me? There for Kim?
Thank you for the presentation. I, for me, I really like this because it was community-driven. And one of the things over time, I mean, you even said it in your, your meeting, this is why I don't like the federal dollars, is you get stuck into, you're out of compliance. So then we went fishing for something that is going to put us back into compliance. And, and I don't think very many people were part of the process, you know, when that first started. But, but the, the challenge was then you ended up with something a lot of the community didn't want. So I like this because it's driven by the community. So I feel like we're in a good spot. Some of the things, just thoughts on the, the exploring the outdoor event venue. To me, that's something that really could activate that area. If I think about other areas where we've done that, if you think about what you did in the Center Park of Downtown, you could do something very similar where that's an outdoor event space. If you think of, oftentimes, people bring up when you're talking about Old Towns, Old Town Arvada, they have a similar square that's used for a lot of outdoor activities. I've been, Ralston House uses a lot for their 2.5K and has outdoor fountains. Not that you have to do just that, but they're good examples where an area was activated with that kind of amenity with an event space. And I think that that area could use it. One thing I would encourage us to look at as we go down is should those other lots be used for more parking? Because even before this came forward and you came up with, or the community came up with this use, parking has been something that's been brought up a lot. When we were looking at potentially having the restaurant and the rodeo market, parking was something that was brought up when they do events of their own in the community. Parking is something that's brought up. And I know that in prior CDBG funds, we've used it for parking. The one that comes to mind was the community garden. We were able to use funds and get rid of those buildings that we had looked at affordable housing on and used it for parking. So I'm in support of moving forward. As far as the de-federalizing or not, like I would look to you guys as you go down this path to say, does it make sense or not? If they're on board with it, to me, why add an additional barrier? But I think it's a good lesson for us moving forward as a, as a city, you know, where this can get really challenging for us.
May I ask a question, Council? Where did we use CDBG money to build parking in the past? I'm just not.
I think that he's referring to somebody to, to open that space up to add more access and parking.
You, you, the city organization paid HUD back for that property. We own that now.
Is that what you're referring to?
Didn't we, didn't we, there was still some CDBG money that went into that because of the community gardens?
PRL had to pay it back.
100%?
Yep. I think it was about $450,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, either way, so that is parking not usable.
Again, analysis will tell. We will bring together the whole, you know, again, a wish list, if you will, and begin to build sort of option A, option B, option C, and start looking at that, and we can get that clarified.
That's fine. I appreciate the clarification. But I mean, to me, that's still another example of where we tried to grab those federal dollars and then ended up in these bad situations where we're trying to figure out how to use them because our original plan didn't work out. And then we're scrambling to find something that the federal government says, yeah, that'll fit, fit the needs. So I, that's part of the challenge with, with those dollars. That doesn't mean they're not good, but I, I feel like this is a good example where the community said, hey, here's a real need we have. And you found a way to, you know, apply those dollars and be able to use them for stuff they already need, so.
And I just wanted to ask the thought question because I was excited if you had an example for me to take.
No, I didn't, I apologize. I, I thought that that, that's how they funded that. So I didn't realize that we paid back. I mean, or I don't recollect. I mean, I obviously was here for that, but I didn't remember that that's how that was done.
Yeah, it was a payback.
But I do, I do recall some, somebody sharing with me that they thought parking would be usable in certain situations.
I think Mr. Shea has it in his documentation for the proposal. So we'll do some research with him.
Stand low key back there, but he has a great amount of knowledge on CDBG. I would be curious to chase that down.
Will do. Uh, Councilor Baker?
So to pay for it, we have a five-year plan for the CDBG money, the CDG money we're entitled to. Could we allocate those future? Uh, could we allocate those future funds to do the construction here? Would that be within our plan that's been approved by HUD?
Currently, this is not in our plan that has been approved by HUD, but that is the next step upon your direction is to go to HUD and amend that plan and create this project as part of our five-year plan. We would perform what is known as a substantial amendment in the bureaucraties and we would add this as a, a formal goal and project.
And so we could use 2023 money we get for this? Okay.
Now, I'm, um, my leaning is to a change of use process. So we don't have to transfer the money. If, if it's working that well, then, then I would not have a problem with that. And, and those three, I did a quick calculation, those three properties, A, B, and C are .52 acres, so about 22 six. Yeah. So I'm, I'm in favor of change of use at this point rather than the full de-federalize.
Anything else?
That's it.
I would like to get a price to de-federalize. But otherwise, I'm fine with the change of use and amendment of plan to use the CGP funds to advance the community garden and parking.
Is it one of the problems though with the price for de-federalizing is that you would negotiate that? So it's not a dollar for dollar and it depends on how friendly they, they plan on being?
Yes. You're absolutely right, sir.
And, and, you know, we could offer a range or a number tonight, but I don't know that that would be the best way to handle it publicly.
Because we would want it to be as little as possible, so...
Not great negotiations.
Yes.
Don't.
We authorize a $1 settlement.
Okay. Go team, go.
Thank you. We're going to be things like this.
I'm too okay with the land use changes and if, if it works out to work best not de-federalizing, again, I look to you guys, the experts that have to work with this to tell us as you get into it more, what's the right way to go. So, um, what I am excited about, because it's the first time I have read that, um, about the startups, um, the, um, parcels that are closer to 72nd. I mean, what a difference of, um, of focus to maybe have some office space for folks to test out whatever they are looking at and maybe have a somewhat affordable. So, um, I just think it's cool.
Okay. With that, we will go, um, pursue a change of use and keep you informed as we do. I also just want to compliment the community that came out as, as Lindsay did as well. It was really delightful to be with our residents every other week for a month and hear their thinking and hear them problem solving with us and saying, but what if we did this? We did this. And so as we do move into analysis, we will keep them with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody need a break?
I'll take a break.
Five minutes. Bye.
We're on. Okay, next up. Presentation on short-term rentals.
All right, I will turn it over to Eric Otzelberger to introduce the team and begin the presentation.
All right, well, we're going to talk about something other than NACs court. So that's a novelty for this evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. And the reason why we're here this evening is to seek your high-level general direction as we work on some parameters around STRs. I mean, this is intended as an update and kind of a download of the adventures we've been on the last several months with outreach and engagement. I want to thank you for your support to date. As we go down this road, our overall goal is fairly simple. We want to create simple, clear, enforceable regs for STRs. And this is following up on from your direction back in March. And with this issue, a lot of this is about balance, balancing neighborhood and community interests with private property rights interests. And you know, there's a wide spectrum in between. This evening, we're going to try to move smartly through the presentation. We're a little bit more casual, so your pleasure if, you know, we have kind of different sections, if you want to engage on different sections. Well, we're going to talk high level about the outreach engagement that we did. We'll give some overview on the survey work we did. Joy will talk about focus groups and comparative regulations from our neighbors. And with that, someone who needs no introduction to those that have been around a while after three decades in the world of code enforcement, Joy Talarico-Hunt. It's like the mafia, you try to get out, but they pull you back in. Joy kind of retired, but with this new venture into short-term rentals, Joy's working with me in part-time capacity to be my right hand with this issue. And with the wealth of knowledge, experience, and work that she's done over the years, it's incredible to have someone like her working with us on this.
It's good to be back.
And I also want to give a shout out Mark Behrens, our code compliance coordinator. Mark is a couple of months in with us. We recruited him, and he has 25 years in the local government world. He's with his family on a trip right now. But Mark, Kit Redmer, and Christopher Edmonds from CMO and a communications team. And Joy and I, we've really been the outreach and engagement team, and I just want to give Kit, Christopher, and Mark a shout out for all the work they helped us with. Next slide, please. All right, so just a little reminder, when we talk about short-term rentals, an STR means the rental of all or a portion of property for less than 30 days. So we're talking properties listed on Airbnb, Verbo, things that, those are, you know, there are a lot of platforms, but those are the two platforms with the majority of market share. As a reminder, we were here a few months ago talking high level. It was the first formal work session that city council had around this topic, and the overall direction we moved forward with was proceed with community and stakeholder engagement and work towards regulating STRs. With our, we have a third-party monitoring service called Lodging Revs. They've been in this space for about 10 years. They have staff on the Western Slope. They're very adept at giving us accurate information as far as what's going on out there. Joy monitors this on a weekly basis, and our most recent data that Joy put together for us, we have 216 STR properties in the city right now with an average nightly rate of $193. Next slide, please. So with engagement, we did a few things here, following up from that March study session. We have a dedicated website landing page that's kind of been the go-to clearinghouse for information. We conducted an online survey. In this year, we received 423 responses. We did a very similar survey in 2019 where we received 627 responses. So it's interesting, we were able to get some trend data just to see whether or not opinions or attitudes changed over the last couple of years to STRs. We conducted focus groups, which I think was a very effective, enjoyable, meaningful engagement opportunity. We had four separate sessions, and those sessions ran between July and August. We offered evening, day, and weekend times. We offered childcare. We were at different locations, MAC, Westview, City Park. And we split up folks, so we never had one group that was more than 10. So to provide for sincere, safe, authentic engagement, incredibly helpful to us as we move forward here, and hopefully, you know, we'll download some high-level thoughts coming from those groups to you here shortly. City Council update, on June 13th, we provided an update for a heads-up for our upcoming activities. We promoted things in the Westy, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. And Joy and I made friends, we have friends, about 320 friends over the past three years, stakeholders, interested community members around this subject. So it's been nice to kind of keep this stakeholder group engaged and focused as we go forward here. Next slide, please. So I'm going to talk just high level here about survey results. There were, both the results of the 2019 and 2022 surveys were provided as attachments to the staff report. But at a high level here, 59% of respondents this year are saying, you know, they agree or strongly agree that the city should regulate short-term rentals. That was up eight percentage points. In 2019, it was 51%. So somewhat significant increase in folks that think we should regulate. Now, the disagree, looking at written comments, there are really two themes with the disagree. One of it is our folks that have strong private property rights feelings, and basically the sentiment is we should just stay out of it and let the private sector marketplace do its thing. And then the other camp, just to try to generalize, is that the city should just straight-up prohibit these. We are not aware of any other jurisdiction in the region or in the country, for that matter, that has effectively prohibited these, and there's legal reasons for that. Next slide, please. So this is a bit busy, but interesting. And I'll just try to distill it because it's a bit of a wicked slide here, but this was a nice add for the 2022 survey. I'll give Christopher Edmonds credit for this. This was a great idea he had. We kind of, this is not a scientific survey, but just taking a nod from our community survey where we try to get at what's really most important to you around this issue. The top five responses, as far as important things that folks want us to be mindful of as you work towards a policy on this, I'll just run through the top five. Number one, keeping speculators and investors from buying up homes to turn them into short-term rentals. That received 59% response. The second most important, making sure homes do not turn into party houses. Three was giving law-abiding citizens the option to utilize their homes as short-term rentals. Four was making sure short-term rentals do not negatively impact property values. And five is maintaining the neighborhood feel of residential areas. So those, at least per the survey, were sort of, and I think that coordinates anecdotally with the hundreds of conversations that Joy and I have had over the last several years. And if, I mean, we can hold questions to the end. If anyone has questions on survey, we can do that. Otherwise, we'll transition to Joy, and she'll give a little overview of the focus groups.
Any questions? I hope she can answer. Okay. Next slide, please.
So as Eric mentioned, we had four focus groups, which, to be quite honest, with 29 years in code enforcement, I was afraid to shut up, was not sure what we'd be facing. They were refreshing and enlightening, to say the least. Very broad spectrum of attendees, which was nice because we didn't know if we were going to be pigeonholing one particular group of people for input, or if we were going to hit the broad spectrum, and we nailed it. So I was really glad to see that. But here's the, from the focus groups, these key points kind of stood out and were repetitive throughout the four focus groups. It was the protection of the neighborhood character. As you all know, my background is code enforcement, and protection of neighborhood character is my passion. And that was the top, one of the top ones. So that was kind of nice to see that we weren't the only ones that were thinking that this is one of our goals. Primary residency requirement was an interesting mix because we had people at all of the focus groups that were either hosts that owned these STRs or were neighbors of ones that didn't want them. So it was a very strong split with that requirement. Not that that requirement or not having the requirement would make a difference with those people's opinions, but it was interesting nonetheless. Licensing was strong. As Eric mentioned earlier, that's, for those that are in favor of it, or even really those that are opposed to it, licensing kind of rose to the top, which I tend to agree with. Collection of fees and taxes, same thing, pros and cons. Some people are like, you know, it's my property, I should be able to do what I want with it without the intervention of government, and then others believe that that was appropriate. Occupancy limits was an interesting one, you'll see on the next slide. Excuse me, I have a cough drop in my mouth. Occupancy limits was an interesting one because, as you'll see in the next comparative slide, that's kind of across the board, but did have a theme. So we can discuss that later if you want to. But respect for property owner rights, there's a bit, a strong, again, both sides, in my opinion, a strong belief that it's my property, I should be able to do what I want with it. And I'm the neighbor to an STR, and I have rights that they're violating. So that was surprising split for me. I thought we would have more people complaining that they were the neighbors of an STR, and it really didn't turn out that way. Balancing competing interests with regulations was the, one of the other ones as well. Next slide, please. This is page one of two, of a comparison that I did across some of our neighboring agencies that I thought their codes were fairly interesting. I was seeing double by the time I got done reading all these agencies' codes and digging for the pertinent information. All but three of these agencies that I polled have a residency requirement. Yeah, so that could go a lot of different ways, but as you can see, all of them are allowed, as Eric mentioned. Licensing fees and revenues, there's almost always something. Kind of like the yearly licensing myself, because coming from a regulatory background, if you have a license for a year and you have a problem property, at the end of that year, you have some leverage as a city to either revoke or not renew a license. So there's a little bit of leverage. Prohibited uses was interesting. Again, coming from my background, I don't want to see an STR in a RV. I don't want to see it in a boat. And the community believes that as well. So the surrounding neighboring agencies restrict certain uses, which I think is smart. Again, back to the occupancy, as you can see, there's a varying approach from agency to agency. For some reason, max eight is a sweet spot. And I'm doing a little bit of research now into why, if there's some kind of, like, where did that magic number come from? Because we're seeing that a lot. And I don't know, sorry, I feel bad. I'm either coughing or swallowing my cough drop. I don't know, I don't know where that number came from, but it's interesting. And occupancy is a slippery slope in my experience. It can present a lot of enforcement issues, investigatory issues, and potentially prosecutorial issues. Don't know that, but I do know from my experience that occupancy on other levels, not short-term rental, but other levels, have created a bit of a challenge. And then the last column you'll see is violations. So what do cities do when there's problem properties, when there's party houses, when there's junk and trash, and, you know, things like that? And there's a varying degree of approaches. We have the luxury in our city of, and thank you all for supporting us in this, is our administrative citation tool is valuable. It's valuable. And it appears that a lot of the other agencies have similar penalty, civil fines, suspension, revocation, those kinds of things. So those were some interesting findings.
Next slide, and the next slide is just other jurisdictions, a continuation, but the same chart was in staff report and just, you know, trying to give that overview. And I think as we've talked about before, you know, we are a bit of a laggard around this issue because most of our neighbors do have regulations in place. But as we'll touch on shortly with Counselor Emmons' question she sent in advance, this is kind of a nice thing for Joy and I because we're being able to learn the good and bad and the ugly from others. And we'll give you, we've got some information shortly here in response to that, in addition to Counselor Normella's questions. But next slide, just one more slide before we transition to that and then other questions. So just to give you an idea of where we would propose, we head from here pending your direction, we would return to the community and focus groups with homework. And that homework would be a straw-person draft regulations draft code that Joy and I would prepare. Then after the holidays, we would propose to reconvene the focus groups that we've worked with to continue their work and service during the January, February timeframe to really kick around the draft regulations. We would then seek to return to you in this venue and study session for your detailed feedback around the actual draft regulations and code, and then pending how you're feeling at that moment. And that time, we would propose moving forward for actual ordinance consideration at a city council meeting sometime in the second quarter of 2023. And if all that went well, Joy and I would work to actually create the licensing program and operationalize this in the third quarter of 2023. So we would be ready to stand this up toward the end of next year. And with that, I'll go to questions, and if, Mayor, if you want, I can address, and I appreciate Counselor Emmons and Counselor Normella sending us a few good questions in advance and prepared to address those first, or?
Can I just ask before I forget? And some of them had said home-based business, which was interesting to me. Is that just so that they can't rent out to somebody?
As far as the designation of home-based business, for, some of it is just the nuance of their licensing program and how certain things are categorized. I mean, for really what we would be looking at in a lot of other agencies, it's a separate and distinct license, but I think, and Joy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, some entities just say, oh, well, instead of creating a short-term rental license, this is a home occupation, but it's an allowable use under that home occupation. So it's just kind of a nuance in how they structure their code. I mean, practically, it doesn't change, it's still a short-term rental. And like Joy mentioned, they're still being taxed and, you know, per accommodations tax or what have you, but it's just differences in the way the codes are structured.
It just seems sort of crazy.
Yeah, I could add to that. I understand that other jurisdictions have selected home-based business as one way to allow these as an alternative to having out-of-state property owners buying multiple properties and renting out multiple properties. By having it as a home-based business, you can ensure that you have a local owner who is overseeing the property on a daily basis, if they are living in perhaps the unit next door.
That isn't how I saw it.
Yeah, I mean, and that's an interesting point. Another, and we'll talk about this, and curious is your thoughts around the principal or primary residency requirement. I mean, from the get-go, that is really felt, and in looking at other jurisdictions, that's the 800-pound gorilla policy issue. And we'll give you our take from the focus groups and kind of what the real intent is at, and just maybe float an option to kick around because they're, you know, whether it's home-based businesses or whether it's that primary residency requirement. And if Mark was here, he'd tell you his experience enforcing in the city and county of Denver, who their licensing, their program got way out ahead and was disconnected from land use, and he had to be the bad guy with a lot of situations. And while Denver tried to make a few examples of some folks, they can't actually enforce what they have on their books. So it's, yeah.
It didn't end well.
I think if it's okay, Counselor Emmons had asked, what do we know, you know, as far as what's going well, what potentially could be amended, you know, from some of our neighboring jurisdictions? And Joy has been making the rounds with our neighbors and kind of ascertaining some of that right now. And, you know, that's what's nice about working in local government, that it's an environment of sharing. I'll try to just kind of succinctly talk about what we've learned as far as best practices. One of them being from, we actually have a Westminster resident that is the STR officer/coordinator for our neighbors down in Boulder. So, and she's been doing this for several years, and when we first met with, her name is Kimberly, she was very honest with us. She said Boulder's first ordinance was simply unenforceable. So Boulder has, and this was quite some time ago, and they've made amendments to their ordinances. But from Boulder, from Arvada, from Centennial, from a lot of our neighbors, here's what we'd say on enforcement. We know enforcement is very important. We would recommend using affidavits for a licensing application, just to have some additional kind of, hey, you're basically signing, putting your name on the line that certain things are in place. You already helped us by unanimous adoption of administrative citations for Title 11. Joy, back in, what was it, mid-2000s, late 2000s, it was her project, and she led the charge for the whole administrative citation system that we've had for many years with property standards. I shudder to think what we would be facing as a city with code enforcement if we didn't have this tool.
And I can't say enough about the, it's a perfect system in that, you know, not that court's not perfect, but court allows people a lot of due process, which leaves us in alert sometimes when they request 13 extensions or, you know, and it was not uncommon in code enforcement for us to write a summons, and a violator in 18 months is still in violation. And that's no fault of the courts, it's just the judicial system. The administrative citation process is much, it happens much more quickly, and it's up until the point where they can request a hearing, it's an immediate fine assessment. So there's no debate, there's no, you know, I can't even tell you the stories code enforcement officers and myself included have had with people playing the system. And there's just no way to play a fine. It's like a parking ticket. It's immediate, it's assessed the minute it hits your front door. And so that has been invaluable. So thank you for allowing us to continue to move that into different sections of the code. And that's where this will be located, is that Title 11.
If you choose to proceed and we write code, we're already ahead of the game. So, and don't worry, there still is due process with the administrative hearing process, and that's all spelled out in 1823 in the existing Westminster Municipal Code. But it's a third-party hearing officer, we've done them before, it's an outside attorney, so it's partial. But once again, it's more expedient, as Joy referenced, to no fault of the courts. It doesn't feel good when you're trying to solve an issue and you're dealing with continuance after continuance after continuance. The asbestos house in Highland Greens on Yates Court is a great example of that, where we did everything within our power and then it sat there. So we're trying to take care of what we can administratively and help our friends in the prosecutor's office so they can focus on domestic violence and more serious issues so we can work on the, not that they're not important issues, but less serious ones. And then on enforcement, what we've learned, three strikes and you're out. You know, we have fines, we have, but unlike some of our occupancy challenges around long-term rentals or owner-occupied homes, having a license that can be revoked, and this is in council with Brian Fusiler, our lead prosecutor, that gives us more teeth. I mean, it gives us something kind of a, you know, something that's of value. And if we get to the point where we might have to seek prosecution in municipal court, that gives us a better fighting chance. Things we've learned from others, do not use revenue collection agreements with the platforms, Airbnb, Verbo. So, and this is in consultation with Deanna Cervantes, our sales tax manager. I think other jurisdictions have learned the hard way. When you negotiate with the big platforms, you get no detail, no ability to audit, and they under-collect and under-report. So our, we, as mentioned, we have 216 of these, and we've been in council with our partners in sales tax because we don't want to come bearing gifts of additional new workload that might be unsustainable to them, but we're on the same page with them. So like we do with a lot of our revenue, we would self-recommend self-collection. The principal residence. I would recommend we have to ask ourselves, what is the goal here? As one of our own staff members can attest to, sure, you know, when Denver started years ago, I don't know if you remember any media coverage, but there was this couple that was clearly living in California, and they prosecuted a couple of folks just to sort of put a chill on things. That has not continued over the years. So while the principal residence, primary residence can sound good, the realities on enforcing it are a little more spurious. It seems to us, what we've heard, the intent is, and you heard from the survey too, you know, we don't want, you know, housing's tough enough, we don't want investor interest coming and buying in a bunch of properties to do this. We want to maintain neighborhood character, all of those things. With some interest on both sides of the issue in some of our focus groups, at Westview, this is where this kind of sprung, from one of our residents in countryside, like, what if you just limited it to one? You know, because, and there was a participant at that focus group, they raised their family here, they moved, but they still own their home on the west side, and that's their investment property, but they're the small-gallon guy. They're not the big faceless investor. And it was sort of a question, should we as a city say, well, it's fine for you to have a long-term investment, a long-term rental investment property versus a short-term, or is it agnostic? And Joy maybe can just touch on a little bit from the enforcement standpoint. We have a better fighting chance as far as if someone was playing games under different aliases to, versus proving, maybe just talk a little bit about the realities, how would we enforce a primary residency requirement?
Well, it would be very difficult, and we'd have to have a lot more staff. And the reason is because people just play the game. They know how to skirt. reason is because people just play the game. They know how to skirt the rules, they know how to layer things so that you have to spend hours and hours and hours trying to find, how many nights did you spend in your house? And where do you get your mail? And where do you, you know, it would be, it would be very, very difficult for staff to prove beyond the shadow of a doubt that a person was or was not a primary resident of a home. And to be quite honest, having done those types of investigations, it suits us better for a number of reasons to have, allow, let's just say, one, pick the number, that Joe Blow owns one STR in the city of Westminster. And then Joe Blow tries to skirt the system, and he creates, you know, LLCs with some other random name. Well, it's a lot easier to investigate an LLC and agents and layers of corporate structures than it is to try to find out how many nights someone slept in their bedroom, or, you know, where did they get their mail? Or, you know, do the neighbors see this car that's registered to California here 180 nights? That's just a nightmare. But what is not a nightmare is go into the Secretary of State website, corporation, LLC, boom, there's your agent. Oh, it's Joe Blow. No, 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 you can't do that. So from a prosecutorial standpoint, from an investigative standpoint, it would be a lot easier to just have that be just a number per real person. You know, we can define that however we want. I see that being less cumbersome for staff than having to prove residency.
You at least have to be living in the state of Colorado.
We could define that, I suppose, however we wanted.
Yeah.
I just think of the properties we have in historic Westminster that don't live here, and they don't have to look at things, they don't have to put up with things.
Yeah, they're long gone.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, and you're spot-on, Mayor, because on the code enforcement stand, property standards, I mean, we do a lot of abatements with out-of-state owners. The way other jurisdictions have come at that is the requirement for a license to have a 24/7 local rep. So we don't have that with other properties, you know, as far as a condition of license. And if you, let's say, a lot of agencies have a three-strikes-and-you're-out policy, and you read their licenses, and it's like, hey, you know, it may not be the property owner, but their rep has to respond within an hour to a legitimate complaint. And if there are three substantiated violations, you know, that can be cause for revocation of license. So we could certainly look at different concepts. And sorry to go on about this, but with the principal residency requirement, and that was the first item in Counselor Nermella's email, this is perhaps the most important, most challenging policy issue for council to kind of chew on a bit. I think, I mean, there are a lot of layers to this STR, but it's sort of that question, how do we most effectively protect neighborhoods and have success in enforcement? Real quick on Counselor Nermella's email here, the principal residency requirement, that's a big, big issue. She had said yes to licensing, and we would recommend licensing, as we mentioned. She communicated support for accommodations tax, and then that was something Joy and I have been in consultation with finance about. The city's 6% accommodations tax could be applied to short-term rentals. As Joy's research has shown, most of our neighbors have done that. I think that's probably a road we would recommend we go down, but of course, we don't have to decide that this evening, but just putting that out there. On the occupancy limits, as Joy mentioned, there, I don't want to say norm, but eight seems to be something that's somewhat of, eight total and two per bedroom with a lot of our neighbors' codes on short-term rentals. The key being party houses and large groups. We have two properties in the city that are challenges. One is in West Cliff, and it's just because of the sheer size, that meticulously-maintained property, no other impact issues, but it's just when the Sparkler Tournament is in town, there's our whole team staying there. So, and then there's a pseudo-illegal event center on Teller, just north of 92nd, Immaculate Property, semi, you know, in that enclave-Jeffco kind of area. Overnight accommodations are one thing, but doing smallish wedding receptions and things like that, and we've been dancing with them for a while on some things. But, you know, when you think about a city with 50,000-plus residential units, and Joy can kick me if I'm wrong, but it's really, you know, right now, we have two, out of those 216, we have like two bad actors we're dealing with right now. But occupancy is top of mind. And we do, in our rental property maintenance code, and this is for 30 and over days, it talks about habitable floor space for first occupant being 150 square feet, second being 100, and then bedrooms, you have to have at least 70 square feet for the first occupant, then 30 for the second. These properties are going to meet that. I mean, the rental property, those square footage minimums are really geared around multifamily, smaller units. And then Counselor Nermella's last point here was the key, just around having something that's enforceable. And I think as we talked about here, that's where the admin citations, once again, thank you for your unanimous support of applying, the support of the ordinance that will apply admin sites to Title 11. License revocation, you know, that is going to be important leverage as we go forward. And as we talked about, the ability to have an administrative hearing versus muni court, it saves the city resources, prioritizes other things, and allows us to more quickly navigate challenges. However, there, with Dave Frankel's crew in the prosecutor's office and the judge willing, there is always the option of criminal prosecution if we ran into a significantly severe situation. However, most, if not all, of our work has been on the civil violation side of things, not criminal. So I think that touched on Counselor Nermella's items that she sent through here.
So their license was revoked, but they continue to do it. What happened?
That's where we would stack on administrative citations. We would fine, we would lean, and if there wasn't a, something that was financially prohibitive, then we would seek counsel with our lead prosecutor and write a summons. And, you know, the judge has the discretion, depending on if we were going down a civil, you know, civil route would be a nuisance abatement route. A criminal route, you know, there would be the authority at the judge's discretion for a $2,500 fine per day or how many days in jail?
Why would, I couldn't answer that anymore.
In jail anymore, so.
No, I mean, I know, it's sort of, it sounds silly to even say it.
And the DUIs don't go there, anybody else.
Yes.
But I guess, Mayor, we would have the ability to levy significant financial penalties, but it's not, because folks can ignore fines, they can't ignore liens. And then they can't ignore liens that become special assessments. And we could, and we've done this with some of our more egregious property standards violations. That's, it takes a little time.
Gets their attention.
I can speak from firsthand experience, when someone sees a several thousand dollar special assessment on their tax bill, because they thought, oh, I don't have to pay attention to the city, I don't have to be a good neighbor, then it becomes real.
Counselor Baker and then Mayor Protam.
I'm just curious if they had their license revoked, who does that, if they would appeal that, who's that go to?
It's a good question. Hearing, probably some type of a hearing board. We've talked about, will you go?
Yeah, so Mayor Protam, in Westminster Municipal Code 1-8-23 right now, there's a very thorough section that talks about our administrative hearing processes, which is basically a due process route. For, you know, that would be an option, and, you know, where there's an independent third-party hearing officer. Something that Joy and I have talked about in concept has been perhaps, you know, this is just an idea, the special permits and license board could be the appeal entity.
Well, that's, and that's why I was wondering, so when I was on that board, there was a business license that was revoked, and that's where it went. To me, I like that because then it's not a, I wouldn't want it to flow up to us, but I think that there should be that due process piece where they have the ability to appeal, and I, that to me seems like a natural place for it to go.
Similar to liquor license.
Yeah. I do like, looking at some of the matrix of the neighboring ones, I like the idea, I don't know necessarily that one, but having a limit on how many licenses one person could have, so you don't have big corporate buyouts of lots of houses in the community. So I think there should be some sort of limit on it. But aside from that, like, I'm on board with moving forward with the actual stakeholder process that looks at it and figures it out, because I don't, I don't think, I'm big property rights, but I also don't think that it can be the wild, wild last for the reason that you mentioned. The other side of the coin is, if I buy a house in the neighborhood, you know, my property right should be protected too. So I think of an instance of something I voted against on my time in council was the, I think it passed, but it was the Temple over by Frightmare. And part of the reason that I voted against it was just that, those folks didn't build those houses and buy that property with the thought of that. So for me, that's kind of the lens I look at, because we have to look at both sides of it in my mind. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. Right now, we're in a gray area where they're not legal and they're not illegal, right?
Zoning is permissive by nature, so if a use isn't explicitly stated in code, then it's not allowed. So technically, it's a zoning violation right now.
What we have been telling them, Counselor Baker, is that we are, because we're in limbo, we have been enforcing impact issues, harking, noise, barking dogs, nuisance types of things. And that's been received really well by the people in the community.
For me, the primary residency issue has to do with how many days a year they can rent it. And if it was their primary residence, even though IRS says you can have two primary residences, you've still got to live there 180 days. So the whole point for me of primary was saying, I don't want this to be short-term rented more than 100 or 120 days in a year. Should we just directly approach it that way?
So, and, you know, that 180-day is, I mean, that's a standard, because that has legal meaning, you know, and other avenues.
That's why I asked.
And exactly. So an interesting case study, our neighbors to the west in Arvada. So they do not have a primary or principal residency requirement, and they allow up to three short-term rentals per owner. If you read their code, it gets pretty nuanced. So let's say you have three properties, you can only have one rented per evening, and between whatever properties you have, 270 days max for all three of them for the year. Joy's had, we love our neighbors to the west, Joy's had some conversations with our friends. I have significant suspicions about their ability to actually enforce their regulations.
Yeah. Well, for us, we have the ability to say, you can rent up to 100 days a year.
We, I mean, technically, anything's possible. However, that principal primary residency requirement has been the proxy, and it's not judging it as a bad proxy, but I think a lot of our other communities share the same goal of, and we heard this from some of the focus group members, that we're okay with occasional use, but had concerns with, let's say, a full-time, which can mean different things. So it's a good question of other, outside of a primary residency, that's the one we see used the most. Are there other ways that we could restrict that, you know, total allowable number of days? I mean, like Arvada, you could codify whatever you want, but then it gets into, what are the ways we're going to effectively administer your policy direction?
Well, with that, if they pay you more than 100 days in a year rental, then you've got them ding, and if they don't pay you, you got them for frauds, tax evasion.
Well, and just want to give praise to our partners at Lodging Revs, and Joy's worked with them. They have some fairly sophisticated algorithms that I think, while not 100% perfect, give us some excellent data to your point, Counselor Baker, about, you know, we, unlike Boulder that has 3,000 of these, you know, we have 216 right now. And then that ebbs and.
That we know of.
Well, and 216 may be a tad high. They're, you know, like I said, I don't want to say that this data is 100% accurate, but it's, it's pretty good. And so I think, and with our friends, let's say we are, we'd be requiring self-remittances we do for other things with accommodations tax. Practically speaking, we'll have a few bad actors, and we'll be able to effectively marshal resources for those few bad actors. But overall, from a policy question, I think that's the big question for council, like, should there be a limit or not on number of days? You know, and that dovetails with the primary residency, because other than that, is there another way to get at that, other than just saying, giving it just a straight-up cap?
Well, I mean, it sounded everything to me that, well, that the primary residency has too many obstacles for us. And so a primary cap would be easily understood by everyone.
If that.
As long as we can enforce it. Because isn't that the big problem with our current occupancy limit now, is that we are afraid to enforce it?
I understand. Challenge of enforcement, absolutely.
So we want to craft something that doesn't make it impossible to enforce and is clearly apparent to everybody involved.
And practically.
And this would also be good then, because it would probably discourage an investor, because if he had to borrow money, the bank would say, well, you can only rent it 100 days a year, and that turns the pro forma into this, boom.
And Counselor Baker, just to follow up on that, I mean, what would practically happen, let's say if council adopted a cap, and say it was 100 days? We would have data, and let's just say it's clear from booking data and revenue that they're renting out 300 days. So we would fine, we would, if they didn't correct behavior, we would revoke the license. And, you know, they could ask for a hearing, you know, depending where that hearing would go, would it go to special permit and license? But I think, I mean, like we were talking about, we could have a pretty good stance to address that if that was a, if council went down.
Now, because, I mean, you're really talking about the impact on the neighbors, or that's what I'm most concerned of. And we have short-term rentals in the city, they're called hotels. This is a really property rights issue, but there is a balance between the property rights of the owner and the property rights of the neighbor. And the neighbor bought in neighborhoods zoned certain ways, and they weren't zoned hotel.
And, I apologize, I failed to mention, but just for the record, as you're all probably aware too, no different than other items in. and as you're all probably aware too, no different than other items in covenants, HOAs in the city do have the ability to further restrict beyond what, where, whatever, wherever council ends up here. But, but of course, as, as with any issue, we have a, a large portion of the city that doesn't have HOAs and isn't covenant controlled. So, you know, we, we've had a lot of frank conversations with folks on HOA boards and, and just, you know, they're, they're very, the city's going to do. But, you know, as with any other issue, we're clear with them. You know, it's, it's kind of up, it's another level of local government that they can decide, you know, within, within the law, what's, what's best for their respective neighborhood.
Are we going to have anything in the ordinance about the owner has to provide some kind of safety concerns? Because when you have a hotel, the owner of the hotel has an obligation to his guests for safety concerns. Are we going to require that of our S T, whatever?
Yes, yes.
We've already discussed an affidavit of safety, basically, saying that the owner attests to their smoke detectors. There's this, there's that. I'm similar to what. As well. So by signing an affidavit, it's a little bit of a, gives us a little bit of leverage. And almost maybe, I don't know, I'm not the legal authority here, but maybe an out if there was some issues with safety.
Well, I'm not looking for an out. I'm looking for a mechanism that if a renter got cheated, he'd have some kind of recourse.
And, and Council Baker, one of the things, you know, concepts we've looked at, at least to, to start with new applications, and, and from the get-go, everyone would be new. I, I think I have a, a deal brokered with my colleague, Chief Building Official Dave Horace, where we could conduct, if, if it was appropriate, depending where direction goes, we could conduct an initial inspection, then have an affidavit. For, for things like carbon monoxide, smoke detectors, just, they're, they're, Joyce found some really good, clear, concise, but, but yet still comprehensive list of safety items that, you know, we wouldn't look to recreate the wheel here. We would seek to follow the lead of, of some of our colleagues out there that have kind of charted this course already.
Are, are, are basically those the really safety complaints that are turned in? Or is that, that someone checks in and when he's gone, his stuff was rifled through and things taken? What's, what's the, what's the complaint that, think of this as a customer protection portion of?
Sure.
What kind of concerns they have? Or what kinds of concerns have been voiced by customers?
Airbnb.
Because I'm sure there are good ones.
Yeah, the, the actual platforms take care of a lot of that. They, they have, in order to be a host, you have to have a fairly extensive checklist in order to even be on their platform, to advertise on VRBO or Airbnb. You can't just decide one day that you're going to have your house for rent. They, they, they put you through, I want to say, a fairly decent regiment of checklists so that the guests are insured some level of, I mean, you're never insured safety, right? I mean, million-dollar homes get broken into. So there's never really that, but, but the platforms take that away from any of the agencies that might have them in their, in their boundaries. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying, yes, ma'am. Joy, I mean, Council Baker, I can only think of one complaint that was maybe two, two and a half years ago from, from, from a renter that was looking for, how do I report what I feel was not, not a, not a good STR rental situation? And it was more of a housekeeping cleanliness issue than a safety issue. So, I mean, Joy, Joy can correct me if I'm wrong, but, and she's been running point more recently with, with, with a lot of the inquiries. But most of, we, we don't receive a lot of complaints, but the ones we do are external properties, you know, the property standards issues we can solve. Most of the complaints are just around folks not liking the use. But, but they're not, I mean, they're not, they're not a significant magnitude.
They're not a life safety issue. Although, we did have, down in historic Westminster, there's an Airbnb down there that apparently isn't marked very well. And the guests show up at the neighbor's house. Fairly oft, regular enough that he said he would take care of business if he had to. And I said, well, you do that at your own risk. Please understand that you need to have a conversation with your neighbor about better marking their rental, their vacation rental. And then, second of all, maybe keep your door locked. I don't know, it's just a thought. You know, people are walking into my house. Well, nobody would walk into my house guaranteed, you know, that my doors are locked. So we get those kind of random complaints. But I guess it would be a lot, could be a life safety for the guests if, you know, they walked in and pulled out a weapon or something. But that's not, you know, that's not anything that the city can manage.
Well, well, I'm on board with licensure. They should pay the same tax everyone else has to pay for short-term rentals. And I want to, no more than 120 days tops. And I'd probably be more comfortable with 100 days.
Thank you. Seymour Evans.
You'd only rent it 100 days a year.
All year, not consecutively?
No, they could be consecutive, they wanted.
Well, then it wouldn't be a short-term rental, right?
Exactly. So then it'd be something else. But if it was a short-term rental, now I don't want them renting it more than 100 days a year. Because I think the problems with parking and the number of guests like that, that's going to severely impact the neighborhoods, severely impact the neighborhoods. And that's probably most complaints you get, isn't it, about cars? I know it is with our occupancy thing.
Noise, yeah.
Strange, strange cars on the street. But then we have to have the conversation about, you know, if it's properly licensed and registered and it's a public street and it's moving every 14 days. But it's, it's just, and we heard from the focus groups, and once again, we, we don't have a high volume of complaints on these. But it's, it's understandable from a neighbor perspective. Instead of the same neighbor, you're, you're seeing different people. And that's, that's different, you know, getting back to that residential character, so.
And if you don't come to lock your doors, you tend to worry about your things.
Remember back to that.
Don't know where you're at. This one's difficult for me because, and I know that you're looking for direction and I'll have to provide it, but, and I'll kind of bring you through my thought process here is that I'm, much like what Counselor Baker and Mayor Protam has said, is that property rights are important, however, not necessarily at the cost of your neighbor and how that impacts each individual. And so, but Counselor Baker's point as far as, and this is where, because I had a conversation with my husband last night, as far as like, I understand the premise of the property rights and being able to do what you want, per se, in the confines of your home. However, it wasn't slated for that use when you bought it or when a person purchased it. And so that's where it becomes a little challenging on moving forward then with saying, it, it almost seems contradictory, right, to being principled under property rights. In that regard, I think we've seen an uptick in the last, I would say, six months to a year regarding parking, regarding noise, regarding nuisances with neighbors. I don't know if they're short-term rentals or not, but I think it should be addressed. And so I did highlight one of the licensures, and I don't know how long we set that for, because there's a, there's a city that does it for five years, you know?
Broomfield.
Or county that, city county does it for five years. And I had highlighted it saying, I like this. However, I think five years is a really long time.
It is a long time. Especially if there's problems with the house.
To be straight up, we, because to protect the city and protect us, if we have a bad actor, we, we, our recommendation would be an annual.
Okay.
You know, so, so there would be, we, we propose making it simple, but just, yeah. I mean, just, just to sort of, because as, as Joy knows from her depth of experience, it's easier to not renew a license than revoke. I mean, if, if we're, if we're in a bad situation for that small amount of bad actors.
Sure. So I like the licensure idea, so that annual, okay. I was thinking more along the lines of like two years. But I, I'll take your recommendation of a year. I'm not so sure on the, the taxing. I'd like a little bit more background as far as, I know you said 6% for accommodations tax. Seems a little high, but.
So that's, that's per code, the city's existing accommodations tax? And I think, as, as council thinks about this, and as other communities have thought about it, it's, it's sort of an equity issue between the lodging industry and short-term rentals. While, while the costs aren't significant, I mean, there are some costs that go along with administering, you know, this, this use. So, you know, there's, there's sort of, we've seen with other jurisdictions, the attempt to, you know, create that equal playing field, if you will, and just make sure that this isn't a, you know, at least, at least this jurisdiction can recover its costs of administering whatever licensing program is, is associated with an STR program.
I know that there was talk around the, whether or not it should have principal residence. I'd like to see us not do that at first. And mainly because you alluded to it's, it's, it can be challenging to enforce, especially understanding how many days they've been there and whether it's a principal residence or not. So I think that one's okay to not necessarily focus on. The three strikes, you're out approach, I would agree with. And then. There's something else you had focused on too. And I don't think I wrote it down. What details are you looking, what other details are you looking from council on for direction?
This, this is super helpful, and, and this is, this is the right level. Once again, I mean, city council doesn't have to make any formal decisions this evening. This, this is, this is helpful guidance. You know, and overall, if you're given the thumbs up that we embark on the next step of engagement with the focus groups and communities with the draft. But, but this kind of feedback will help us creating that first draft, if, if you will, that we know will be unplated, kicked around. And ultimately, that's where, you know, after our work with the focus groups, we'll be back to truly, you know, that, that will be, we'll be looking for some, you know, with your, with your blessings, some, some decisions around very specifics. But this, these, on these kind of major issues, this is, I think, right on.
In your focus, because I think I've asked this when this was brought to us this last summer, it's just, I would like a better understanding about if there's any information on how this might affect purchasing properties? Meaning if someone is looking to purchase a home in one of our neighborhoods, do so many rentals in a neighborhood affect a sale of a home? So I'd like to better understand that, because that does have a neighboring effect, even though it's not a noise or parking or other issue. I just, I don't want to offset it. I don't want to affect that, so.
Okay.
Basically, I have some rules for their loans that they will not.
Exactly, that's why, that's why.
Well, and, and Council Seymour probably knows a lot about this. I mean, insurance is an important factor with short-term rental activity as well. Because of course, if you're, if you're operating a short-term rental, you take on significant additional risk. I, I, for what it's worth quickly, I haven't seen any, any data to date as far as negative impacts for STRs for adjacent property values. But we can, we can look at, we can look at what else is out there.
Long-term rentals are usually more of a problem than.
And it was the long-term rental. I know when I was purchasing my first home, the realtor saw that it was probably 80% rentals, which I was looking to purchase and own, which would affect my type of loan and what I could get for purchasing my home. And so that affected that. And so that just is top of mind for if I purchase a home, how many rentals in one neighborhood will start then affecting the overall ability that's on a home.
I can tell you that usually the short-term rentals are the nicest property on the block. That I can tell you fairly definitively.
I'm not against them, I just, I just.
No, yeah, your point is fair.
And, and there are, you know, Wheat Ridge is an example. They, their city council put caps on, they have, they have four council districts. So they're not at large, but I think it was 2%, no more than 2% of properties in each council district can be a short-term rental. They're a long way, you know, the market for Wheat Ridge or Westminster, you know, just, just, it's not there. I mean, it's, I mean, the most recent data, 216 out of 52,000 residential units that we have in the city. So, you know, it's, 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 but, but they're spread throughout. And, and I sent Joy on a mission to see, you know, beyond council districts, you see these quotas set by other councils. We haven't come across anything that gets more narrow than that. So to your, to your question or concern, Council, I meant to say, well, one per block. Or, you know, we, we'll keep looking, but we haven't come across anything more restrictive than that. But, but it's, it's, you know, I, I said, that's something to consider as we go down this journey too. Is, is their interest in attempting to put some sort of overarching quota on licensing? Of course, for mountain communities, that's a huge thing, huge thing. I mean, if you're trying to get a short-term rental license in Breckenridge, good luck. It's not going to happen.
Yeah, we even went so far as like, well, each community has a name. There's Sunset Ridge, there's Sheridan Green, you know, and then could we do it that way? But, you know, we, we were trying not to get down and dirty until we really had some more direction. But, yeah, thank you.
Is there some more, any more thoughts?
I'd, I'll just concur. You know, moving forward, I'd like to see a cap on the number of rental days. You know, I'm not set on any specific number yet. I think max occupancy at eight is plenty. Lodging tax, they need, they need to pay what everyone else is, is paying on that. I don't think we should have much of a fee on this, because we want to encourage them to apply for the license and get the license. And then annual renewals are, are, I think, are, are critical. And the fact, though, too, it's going to be, it's going to be balanced out a little bit differently. I may be concerned about the fact that we do have quite a few homes and HOAs. I know that ours will restrict it. And there goes all my income from the firecracker tournament to pay for my other vacations.
Doggone it.
So, but, yeah.
I never thought of the firecracker tournament. They can walk from my house and get that.
Oh, yeah.
We've got a friend in Broomfield that she rented her townhouse out, house for an ungodly amount of money every year.
I know, it's crazy, yeah. I like how they do with Mardi Gras.
And I, I do think, the, the ones that, that we've utilized, the market really takes care of a lot of the safety issues. Most of the ones that we've been in, they have more fire extinguishers than I do in my house and all those kind of things too, because they want to get a better ranking, which gives them good money. And so the market, if they don't get good, you know, reviews, they get less money and they go down the list and, you know, they, they don't. And, you know, they, they don't make any money. So I'm on board moving ahead with this. And I think we can put some guardrails around it because if we don't, then we don't, we don't have any options or any say. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
I would like to understand on the days from stakeholders in the, in the market. Because I don't want to arbitrarily kill, kill it by making it so restrictive that it is not. And maybe others would, would like that, but I, I wouldn't. I think that this market serves a certain need. For example, my family and I have a large family when I travel. I like going to the Airbnb's because a lot of times, the only way actually to fit my whole family in a hotel is to violate their occupancy. And it's not comfortable and there's not enough room for all six of us. So I think there's a market for it. I think the other thing though, I would be interested in how you look at some sort of cap on, on area. The traverse reason of what Council Seymour just said, I don't live in an HOA and I don't, you know, I don't want the city then to drive them all into non-HOA places. And, you know, that's where they start targeting purchasing. Granted, my experience walking around the city, you can tell the ones that are Airbnb, they have lock boxes and stuff and they're usually not very occupied and they're usually pretty well taken care of. So, I mean, there's some upside to it if, if we make sure that we're maintaining it. But those are the only other two things that I wanted to bring up with my colleagues.
I'm a thumbs up with everything that they have said, so I won't repeat. And thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time and thank you for your support as we continue on this journey. And we'll re-engage stakeholders and we'll, we'll be back.
Perfect. Be tuned.
Thank you, Sammy. Thanks, Eric. Thank you, Joy.
Yeah, thank you.
Andrew.
Yes.
If you do not need a please, that's. I'm prepared to receive a tip. And I am a, a person that's selling there, but if the police department does not have to stand there with me and sell my riddles. But I'm not answering it.
Free labor.
Times are tough. Actually, we're off the riddle. They said times are tough, somebody might try to rob the riddle.
Okay, next protocol.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. This is follow-up from an earlier discussion that we had. And I believe that Council Seymour had initially made some suggestions. And I, I want to, if we can, start tonight with the protocols. And the protocol document is in front of you on the table, so you all have it. And the word protocols is highlighted because this in the past had been referenced as the city council code of conduct. I don't think we had N protocols in the title, but it was a series of protocols that had numbers. And just to make it more clear what we're talking about. The first item that's presented here with a proposed modification for you is in Protocol Number Four on the agenda. And I have included some language here. And thank you to Abby and Cody and Greg Graham for helping along the way here. This is language that was inspired by Council Seymour's suggestion. And essentially that study session, post-meeting and exec session presentations would be governed by Protocol Four. And that in order to provide some structure to these presentations, the mayor would recognize speakers before they're heard on one of these items. And this is intended to cover study sessions, post-meetings and exec sessions. So a question was asked, I think, Council Emmons, the intent behind 4A here. What, what was? Oh, sorry.
It doesn't make sense.
Right.
Okay.
Because I usually ask the city manager to present because he knows who's presenting. I don't. And that's just how we work. So that didn't make sense to me either.
Well, the, the intent, my intent was, as we've been doing in practical terms, it's, it's in legislative meetings as well as the chair recognizes. You have to be recognized to the chair and you need to address the chair.
And I think that's more for us than it is for the speakers, right?
That's correct. This is all about us.
So perhaps this is councilors.
Yes.
Instead of speakers.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on that? So to me, one of the things that reading through this, I think, may be overdone. Like, I like number one, and I think it's critical, in my opinion, to keep conversation going. But to the other two points, I just want to bring up a couple of thoughts to my colleagues to think about. One, sometimes presenters like it when we ask going through. And I just think if we just make sure that, you know, if the mayor asks the presenter what they prefer, then we get in front of that at the beginning of the presentation because some of the presentations are better. So if you put a hard rule saying, we're going to wait.
Well, tonight, each presenter.
They've told us.
Some, some wanted to wait till the end, some said, ask your questions here.
Yeah, and I, and I like that. The other thing, I don't mind the people being heard before somebody else speaks. But I just, sometimes in conversation, one of you might ask something that I want clarification or one of the rest of us wants clarification on. And so I, I think that there, it's nice to have the ability to be able to just raise your hand, be able to follow up on that question because instead of having them, you know, come back around. So I think though, if we all follow the first rule and we make sure we get in the queue, which in the past, I've, it hasn't been a problem. Like when I was very first on council, to be frank, Mayor Atchison was really good about making sure people didn't speak if they weren't in queue. And so if, if we all agree that that's something that we're going to do and we get in queue with, with the mayor, then I don't think that it's a problem with the other ones. Because I think the problem that we've run into is people stepping on top of each other, not wanting to be recognized where some members of council might have had their hand up and done the proper thing, gotten queue. And then there, you know, three peoples later, because people are talking over. And every single one of us, I think, has done it, including myself. But I think that it's.
Wait, you were going to say something?
So, so that, that's my opinion. And I think that gets to you, to your intent though, Council Seymour.
Yes.
So I still don't, that didn't clarify A. The mayor will recognize speakers before they are heard on.
Counselors.
Counselors.
That still doesn't, so she's saying, Lindsay, you're next?
Yeah, you would raise your hand, she puts her tick mark down, Lindsay wants to speak. And then when it's your turn, she.
No different than I've done tonight.
Yeah. Just the other side of it will obey, we're agreeing that we're going to obey to that. Because I mean, the mayor does try to do it. Council just hasn't been behaving.
I think we've done a pretty good job.
For the most part.
I think we've had a great run lately.
Is that okay? I mean, can we say like note speakers? Like, is she formally recognizing, like making eye contact? Like, that's what I don't.
I say, Councilor Seymour, Councilor Emmons.
She's though saying, when you raise your hand, are you going to give her a signal that you've seen?
Like, that's what I don't understand. This doesn't make sense.
I write you all down. I've got pages.
I think it sounds like it's the word recognize, that's, that's, that's not working. Call upon? The mayor will call upon councilors requesting to speak before they're heard?
So that's my question. Is it like acknowledging, like got you? Or is it a, the mayor will say, we'll call upon councilors before? Is it?
I read the loss now.
No, I think, no, I, I follow what you're saying. It's, I think what it's, the intent of it was to say that before you get into the conversation, the mayor's going to say, it's your turn to speak. But I think you have a good point that I think it's all is equally important to make sure that you know you've gotten to the queue. But I think you're asking, is it one side or the other? Am I following you right?
Like it.
So I, I, yeah, I follow you. So I think that the statement has to be holistic, that the mayor's going to get you in queue, say, which I think you do well. I see when you acknowledge me.
That's why I don't.
But then it's the other side that you're going to then say, it's your turn to talk. That's what you're asking, right?
Because you've always said, Councilor Emmons or Councilor, that's what.
We're codifying what we've already been doing.
We were not for a while though. We had a free-for-all going on in here for a while.
And, and sometimes we still do. It's old.
I mean, can we, can we change it to the call upon? Because then that will be direct as far as.
Yeah. Do, would you like it? I mean, we could say the mayor shall queue and then call upon. That recognizes it's a two-step because you're, you're going to want to let her know that you're interested in asking the question, but she won't get to you until it's your turn.
Pull on your ear once.
And anybody, whoop, it's old. Yeah, we could make it clarify. And so someone who just walked in here and not observed one, we're reading these protocols. Counselors will signal the mayor that they wish to speak. When it's their turn to speak, the mayor will, whatever word you want to use. Call upon them. Okay, does that make it a little, a little better process then?
It's a communication person, Scott will be asleep.
And may I say also then, I heard on 4B comments about how we're currently doing it. And yes, I have actually been at the pre-meeting on Monday afternoons, asking presenters to clarify whether they'd like questions before or after.
And they all did A pluses tonight.
And they all did it. But maybe that first sentence is modified to reflect that. Presenta, so as it's written, presentations will be concluded before questions are asked to ensure the agenda can proceed efficiently, comma, unless the presenter indicates otherwise. Does that work for you? It's a default position to questions at the end unless the presenter says, please ask me as I go through it. Does that work?
Fine with me.
Good. This keeps it in council's control. Otherwise, if it said the presenter shall say, then that degrades to the lowest level of awareness for staff, I think it'd be better for.
I think that's good. Because I also think that over time, like a council staff who presents a lot, gets used to the questions a certain council asks and they'll, they'll defer to, I know that your question's going to be on slide three, Council DeBatt, and so I like that.
So 4C is really intended, I think, to recognize parliamentary procedure, which is to say, each person gets a chance before any other person goes again. I don't mean to exclude questions, maybe. Mayor Pro Tem would, would foresee potentially be edited to say, apart from questions.
Clarifying questions, maybe.
And if you don't even, I mean, if you don't need to add it, if it's just an understanding, that's fine if we do. I just don't want people to be like, because I mean, it's, sometimes that's silly to, to wait when it's something.
So with that, I started a new list tonight. So that I knew everybody had spoken before anybody went second. And you know that when you don't speak, I still am going to call on you to give, make sure you.
I noticed.
Hey, the next edit that's.
Whether you want to or not, I'm going to ask you.
So the other suggestion in here is at Protocol Six. And that is on communications, excluding city council members from shared communication is to be avoided. I, I propose that edit for you based on feedback, I think, from our earlier discussions.
My only question on this, because if it's something that's like, hey, this happened with this property, I don't usually CC everybody on it. If Jody decides that it needs to be shared with everybody, that's his discretion. If you all want me to CC you on everything I send to the city manager, happy to do it. But to me, it's like if it's a policy thing, that the whole body would need to. But I'm up to you guys. I, I just want clarification because that's been my practice. If you want it done a different way, I just want to know.
I do most of mine, just because if I'm getting it, y'all might get it. And that way you have the question that I posed.
Could, could qualify that to say on matters of general interest. Recognize there might be communication that's not on a general, a matter of general interest.
I know, I, I mean, because there's sometimes where it was more of a personal matter, but it could be general interest. And I ask for it to remain personal. So that's where I, I think as it's written is fine. I'm just saying that as a matter of interest for everybody, that's what I do. I don't necessarily hold y'all to that because.
Yeah, like when there's questions about the agenda items or whatnot. There's been times Jody answers and has all of us on. And I have to read below to know that there was even an email sent because we didn't see it.
I don't, I don't do that. If it's like a meeting thing or agenda thing, I always think.
But we have had some of those, so.
It's more like if I get something on my Facebook and I'm like, I'm going to ask staff, like, I don't really give you all that.
I had a personnel issue today that I just sent to him because.
Like referring a personnel matter back to me as, as city manager. I don't copy everybody on that because that's why it's getting referred back to me. Someone approached a member of council on a personnel-related matter and I'll just deal with it as city manager. When I reply all or include you all in a response, it's because I, I'll err on the side of being conservative and thinking, there's information here which is really interesting. There was, you had just raised for me a graffiti issue the other day. And we would typically just go ahead and clean that up. But this one was a really interesting one because it involved a different party and people had to figure out who owned the property. And then so that's why I copied all of you on letting you know that, that that piece of graffiti was removed. Typically, I wouldn't have done that, but if there's a value add for you, then I'll.
I called him because I was driving at.
Yep.
And I couldn't, I didn't want to worry that I forgot it between there and home, so.
Yep. And it was a tough one for staff to, to work with the agencies involved. So that's why I thought it would be interesting to all of council to, you know, know that it's, sometimes it's more than a simple step.
Next, Protocol Eight addresses land development quasi-judicial hearings. And for discussion, I've added, highlighted text here for, under Protocol Eight, refrain from use of electronic devices for communication during quasi-judicial hearings. Recognizing that the packet lives on an electronic device, reading the packet will require an electronic device. But communication is more problematic during a quasi-judicial hearing.
I would like to see. And I don't. It's one thing, I know when you get a text from your work or something and you just, and you're done with it. But anybody on their phone for three hours, sitting at the dais, is not okay. I don't care, and it doesn't have to be a judicial. We're conducting our meetings, so.
And that.
This is a free flow conversation.
And so Mayor, your comment, that suggests this reference to the use of devices could live under a more broad category in our meetings, such as Protocol Four Agenda. I mean, we're not just. I mean, we're not just talking about in the quasi-judicial hearing, or in Protocol Eleven, there's one that references for the context of an exact session. Another place probably don't want to be using electronic devices. But, but perhaps a more general statement about the use of electronic devices for communication is to be avoided.
I mean, the Protocol Four, that is fine.
And this is where I had a little bit of a stick, was because a lot, and I'm not using my iPad for communication, I'm using it for all my questions, the packet. Everything was there. So how do you define? I mean, because here's the thing, is that some, sometimes, and for the last five years or so, sometimes people have called out councillors for using their iPads for a land use hearing, or for anything outside of a land use hearing. So how does that work so that it's clearly identified that it's using it for work and not?
And I think councillor Emmons, that we actually have language stat effect in our rules, which is intended to be read publicly to help the public understand exactly that. That the packet lives on an electronic device.
But here's the difference for me. What I'm, because I'm constantly having to scan because of looking for people to talk or whatever. And it's one thing when I see somebody pulling something up. It's another thing when I see somebody all night, sitting there, doing, I don't know. That's the difference to me. That isn't about a meeting. That's about, I have no idea.
For reference, it's, I believe, page thirteen of the rules. Councillors use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is the common practice of this city council, these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during public hearings.
But it's not just public hearings. Should be paying attention to the entire meeting.
Well, yeah, and so that, that would have been protocols, because these are our protocols. The way I see that too, is that it's not a council rule per se, but it's our code of conduct. And so. We could put that somewhere under four, as has been mentioned now. We could just refrain from use, just take, refrain from use of electronic devices for communication during meetings. And put that as number five if we want to.
But it may not be communication. Maybe you're doing work, or maybe you're writing something that you didn't get done. I don't know what people are doing. I just know they're not paying attention.
Well, we could, we could say, and, and we, we're not gonna be all the legis like that. It's frustration, I know. But maybe we could say councillors should refrain from using electronic devices.
What if it was something like, using electronic devices less for.
Outside of the scope of council.
Yeah, outside of the scope of the meeting, or something like that.
That's good.
I don't know. So this has come up every, all the time. I mean, those of us who have kids, sometimes you get messages from kids, and I know that's been brought up. I think that's why we, in the past, have narrowed it down to quasi-judicial, being more of a hard rule, more being an understanding that you shouldn't be.
Not on it forever.
Well, I, I, I understand, but I mean, that's where it's hard, though. Because, and I think from, from the, and I don't disagree with anything you're saying, I'm just saying from the view of the city, where we get into potential legal problems, is in quasi-judicial, if somebody could prove that somebody was taking direction from somebody outside of a meeting. And that's why it's, that's why that's in there, because that's something that actually could cause problems. Where the other stuff, to your point, is annoying, but at the same time, are we the ones as a body that get to ultimately say what any member of this council does? Ultimately, the public's gonna be the ones who hold us responsible.
It's a decorum issue, but not necessarily.
I don't think that it's not something that we, as a council, should agree with each other, that our heads are gonna be in, in these meetings. I just don't know how you, you put it in there and not start getting it.
Well, the public's already called that out in an instance too, so you're right. Public will judge that.
Okay, moving on.
So do we want something under Protocol Four, addressing the use of electronic devices? Because it could say something like refrain from use of electronic devices during meetings. It could be more narrow, could say for communication. If, if you just, if you wanted it to be a wider applicability than just exec sessions or quasi-judicial, where you are obviously mindful of ex parte communications.
I think it's important, in my mind, to put, point out like you've done, but I don't, I'm not opposed to still recommending something else. I just.
It's advised.
Yeah, it's.
Visable.
It's, it's refrain, too. It's.
It's requested.
It is asked of.
Yes.
Wait, are we adding it in four or not?
They're adding four.
I think, I think it fits in four, as it is different than a quasi-judicial.
This will all be cleaned up and presented on an agenda for your consideration in future. Okay, then. Are we acceptable with having a reference under Protocol Eight for the quasi-judicial context and not communicating electronic devices then? Okay. The next one is proposed Protocol Nine, a new one that addresses speaking for the city. When speaking publicly in an individual capacity, be clear that you're doing so on your own behalf and not as representative of the city or a majority of city council. Notify city council of your intention to speak publicly to avoid surprises. Consider the lobbying protocols for additional guidance.
Yeah, it's broad enough.
Protocol Eleven, Exec Sessions, has been supplemented. I thought it might be helpful to have items two, three, four, five, and six there to expand upon our common agreement when we're in an exec session. And for those listening who don't have this handy in front, this would add ground rules. Keep information confidential once exec sessions are over until and unless public discussion of the matter becomes legally permissible. Be vigilant that discussion stays on topic and did not stray from the specified, from the specific subject. Conclude each exec session with a clear consensus of next steps and whether information sharing is anticipated. For example, if negotiators are authorized to share information in follow-up to the session. If appropriate, agree on who are our spokespersons and what information will we share at this time. And respect the privacy interests of those involved and be mindful of risks in sharing privileged information. And refrain from use of all electronic devices during executive sessions. That's more prescriptive than the other references to exec, excuse me, electronic devices, just because of the sensitivity of the information in the exec session. So that's the thought behind that more prescriptive language. So I'm open to your edits.
I think that's absolutely what we discussed.
Thank you. That's all I have for the protocols. If there were additional protocols that you would like to modify, let me know. The next document to talk about are the rules and regs. And the rules and regs have evolved over time to be a bit cumbersome. And over time, new paragraphs get added, and they're not always consistent with the old paragraphs, and we don't always remove inconsistent things.
Gone, gone, gone.
So Greg Graham, thank you, Greg.
Excellent.
He, he was willing to take on the task of attempting to streamline this document.
Don't give him a chocolate.
There are a lot of them. And it's, it's intended, I think, to perhaps take a more consistent approach with the terminology. Because throughout the document, over the years, we've used inconsistent terminology. And I think that was one of the things that Mr. Graham was hoping to address. But there were specific substantive changes that I got feedback from council on. And one of which was the clock for testimony time. And how about making it more clear that our clock for testimony time is gonna be five minutes? Unless there is, you know, justification to vary from that, just so there's a clear expectation for participants. Just as our public comment clock is five minutes, the proposal here would be to have testimony times be five minutes. So that, just wanted to start with that discussion and see if that's an acceptable edit.
Yeah. Not agree. At this point, I'm just gonna say, if you don't agree with something, speak up.
That was a big one. That's on page six, under Agenda Procedures. Hold on, there's the reference to the five minutes under comment, but the testimony reference to the five minutes.
Testimony.
Thank you.
Twelve E.
Twelve E. Well, page twelve, seven point two, two, one, A.
Wait, my clock is seven, seven?
And that was the five-minute clock on testimony, seven point twenty-one, A, on page twelve. But, okay, I'm going back now. Let me help with that.
I guess I'm not understanding why it goes back and forth between chair and mayor. In some instances, it's just, some instances, it's mayor.
So I think over time, we'd use the term presiding officer in place of chair, and in other places, we'd use the term chair. I think what you're seeing here is a more consistent approach to chair versus presiding officer. And I don't think it's necessarily intended to strike mayor. Mr. Graham? Because obviously, in the mayor's absence, the mayor pro tem is the chair. So is chair the uniform term that is being recommended tonight?
That's, that's right. Chair is the uniform term, but there are times when the mayor has specific privileges, when another chair might not have specific privileges. And it's possible that there are instances where that was simply missed, and it's possible that it was intentional. So I'm not sure.
Broncos just lost in overtime nineteen sixteen. But they made it to overtime. That's good.
I like the silver lining.
That's our judge now. Good.
We could do a, a run through afterwards and, and.
Absolutely.
Make it consistent.
So for example, there's a section in here we, we added on emergency meetings. And that specifically identifies the mayor and any two councillors. The purpose of that is because that we really mean the mayor and not anybody else. So, but we can, and also later in that, later in that paragraph, that is when we changed the mayor or other presiding officer to the chair.
How about the mayor pro tem and a head nod from a councillor?
An expansion of powers that I'm not really aware of.
And it could be, I mean, it's, under mayor, it's like the mayor, and then in other sections, the chair. So it must have been missing something where in some sections, it should be mayor, in some sections, it should be chair.
All, all subject to the charter, I'd say, also, because there are specific provisions in the charter that assign duties to the mayor. And so that's, we're trying to be consistent here. And just with, as with the emergency meeting language, special meetings under the charter are the authority of the mayor or any two members of council, right? So that's charter language that's been put into rule.
I think he's right, but number three under consent, and that should maybe be chair, not mayor. About the meeting proceedings. Go back and look.
Which number is that?
Two point two C, number three.
We can absolutely go through.
Yeah.
I'll make sure that.
There's a lot of red.
I love it. I love it. I love it.
There was, you had another question, councillor Emmons, and it was regarding the address. So in the past, our rules required that anyone who wanted to speak could provide their address.
Oh, yeah.
And the courts have found that as a first amendment issue, and it chills speech. There are people who are fearful of giving their addresses. So they aren't willing to participate and speak publicly because they're concerned for their safety. So our recommendation would be to substitute for address.
Residency.
Relationship to the city, I think, is the language that we propose, right? And that would conform potentially, you know, is this speaker a business owner, or is this person a visitor, or is this person a resident? Without having them be compelled to disclose their street address, which they might not be comfortable to. So if that's amenable, that's, that's why address was replaced with relationship to the city.
I can see that. It's just, it was not very inherent to say relationship to the city. I mean, is that something, I wouldn't go up to and say, I'm Lindsay, my relationship to the city is. I just, I don't think that that's intuitive.
We're open to your suggestions for language, and we could always make it better, I have no doubt. But that, that's the intent. It's to have context for the speaker.
Yeah, yeah. I just, and I, I think the address was a sticky part. I understand the premise of, of taking it out, because that, I mean, it is a, a safety concern. But I also, it, it's important for the council to understand whether or not they're a resident on a particular matter, on their thoughts, on their feelings, on policy, because someone from Denver does not hold weight as someone who lives in the city, at least for me. I want to hear their voice, but I, I want to hear the residents of where I am elected to serve.
Couldn't it be something like to state whether you're a resident or permanent relationship to the issue or whatever? They know that that's what you're looking for. That would clarify it a bit, that what relationship mean.
And it could expand it. Yeah, I mean, it could, relationship to the city could be expanded to say, comma, whether resident, visitor, business owner, employee. Could, we could list some relationships so that people understand.
An example, yeah. I, that would help clarify, Lindsay.
Yep.
Makes sense.
And I think that reference may be in a couple of places. I think that term relationship to the city is probably on land use matters and probably non-land use. Yeah. Page fourteen. So the same edit. At seven twenty-two, A.
And then on that same item on seven point two one, is where I noted that we had changed the pronouns to actual titles, which I wasn't clear that we, as a council, gave direction, because there was clear voter. In our last election, clear voice from our voters that this wasn't a priority to change, to make the pronouns appropriate to the title. All that said, I don't care that it's changed to the title. I need it grammatically correct if it's changed.
Sure.
And in that, it's not. In that paragraph, it's not.
So I think the, some of these edits, in order to streamline the document, I think a lot of pronouns got removed, because I think there were, were ways to state these without any pronouns at all. If, if we have typos in here that need correction, absolutely.
Which one was that again, that you, what page?
Twelve.
Okay, paragraph.
B. Any person, any person wishing to speak other than the applicant will be required to state their name. That is not correct. If you want to change it to persons wishing to speak, then it's their. Then it becomes plural. Any person is one. Any person is singular, which means it's a his or her.
Any person's wishing to speak.
Person's plural.
Persons wishing to speak is a plural.
Would that correct it, persons?
Yes, persons wishing to speak is plural.
Go with Lindsay.
Okay.
Go with Lindsay.
Grammarly would fix that, but it's the only way I'd know.
You would be both.
All right, it's just. Sorry, not.
You don't have to be sorry. Showing your, those brains, what do you use that work?
From Louisiana, I believe it's their, D E R, there.
It's y'all.
Well, in Pennsylvania, it's yous.
Two yous.
Two yous. And then thirteen, the first bullet, need to add whatever we're going to do with relationship to the cities.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I'll expand that. So there are at least now three references that will get expanded, that relationship to the city. Okay. So you'll have another chance to review these. We'll put clean copies, we've got all the typos we can fix, on an upcoming agenda. Historically, we've put forward the rules and regulations for formal adoption, I think by resolution, and we can have the protocols accompany that document on that same agenda.
How many pages are you going to cut out?
When you take all this out, that's what I really want.
Four? Or is it five?
Five.
Thanks, that's pretty impressive.
But we're trying to streamline it, and, and to that end, expense reports on page seventeen, take a look at that and see if it makes sense. Our, our hope was that the expense report provision could be simplified just to conform with the city's travel policy rather than attempting to, to restate the travel policy. So it's a bit shorter, I think it's probably substantially shorter than it was. But as I said, you know, the, the document grew over time in response, I mean, it was, we need a new paragraph here, and so new paragraphs were added.
We had to make one adjustment, I remember, because of a city council.
This would allow for this document not to have to be amended every time the city's travel policy changes, because then you get in a situation where it's two updates out of date. And I think there's a technology driven question, and that addresses remote live participation on Monday nights, and I think the clerks might be able to help us understand the issue.
This is, this is only about public that want to testify in public comment or, or public testimony, and currently they can speak live during the meeting. It has been not smooth with technology, and because we have three options, I would like to remove the fourth option if that would be okay with council. They can still leave a voicemail, they can still show up in person, and they can still write an email, but we've had a lot of problems because we can't move them into the meeting because it gives them too much control in the meeting, but having them on their line, getting disconnected and trying to get them back, and so it's, but of course, whatever council wishes.
Can we have that for, an option for, is this completely virtual or is this hybrid?
This is, this is how we do it now, so I guess it's, it's hybrid.
Because I would, I would want it for, God forbid, we ever go into twenty twenty season again. I don't want that to be precluded from, as an option. I think, I think it makes sense to cut it now, but lessons learned. I would like it as an option, if we can make that happen in a purely virtual setting where we're not able to do any kind of.
I would think that would go under our emergency something or other.
Yeah.
I read, was reading.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. I think that that is excellent feedback, because if we were to go into lockdown again, the in-person option would be taken away, so we would still want to be publicly available and as in-person in real time as we could be, so yeah.
I saw Bruce's thumb up, anybody else? You good?
We have, we've given other ways to do it, and it actually makes it harder on them, I would assume.
So is it just public comment, though? It's not like, like say, say in a public hearing, sometimes they have experts that we've been allowing to remove any.
So the experts are different, because we do move them into the meeting, so to speak. They're made panelists, and yeah, that, that makes the connection better, it, it, we're easier, we have a better communication with them. It's not some anonymous person who's kind of on the phone, and I can't really tell if they're there or not there.
Makes sense to me, because I mean, ultimately, it's really just them sitting to leave their voicemail, I mean, as far as like application wise, we don't talk back to a lot, so I think it's, like to me, and if we get locked down again, I'm still coming in here just so you all know. Sorry.
Anything else you need?
I appreciate the direction.
I say hallelujah to this document.
All right.
Thanks for all your work. It is ten twenty-four, and we're dismissed.